Call this meeting is to comply with the city council's order. The clerk, please call the roll.
Yeah, you may.
I'm here.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Seaman.
Present.
Councilmember Snapper.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Snapper will not be joining us this evening. Um, we don't have any additional agenda items. Just a couple of things to point out on upcoming agendas. Next Monday, the 24th, we have a lot of ordinances that will be, we believe, the last meeting of this council. Monday, the 31st, many members of the council will be at the Maryland Municipal League Fall Conference. And then Monday, November 7th, is the night before the election. And we're doing as we always do and taking pity on the clerk and her, I guess, the deputy clerk and whoever on the Board of Elections, so that they can get things set up for the election the next day. And they're gonna have a long day and they don't need to be here late into the evening listening to us talk.
I thought the reason was so that the council could be campaigning.
Oh, yeah. There could be that, too. And something I just wanted to point out for upcoming agendas in January is that in January, we'll be having both a presentation from Maryland National Capital Park and Planning on their proposed zoning rewrite, where they're rewriting the zoning code in the county, and also the promised discussion on planning and zoning and what it would take for the city to do its own planning and something. So both of those will be happening in January.
After Mr. Robinson is off to council.
That'll be done. I'll come and listen.
And at this point, we'll go to public comment. If anybody has any comments they'd like to make, and if you can, please come to the podium, identify yourself, keep your comments to three minutes. We appreciate it.
My name is Wayne Sherwood, I'm a 218 grad behind the community center. Mr. Mayor, city councilperson, city manager, city clerk, thank you for an opportunity to say a few words this evening. I'd like to comment on an item that's on the agenda for later tonight, namely the mission statement for the Recreation Department. This item also came up at a city council meeting a couple of weeks ago and has been revised since then. One thing I thought was going to be contained in the mission statement that I don't see mentioned in the October 13th version from the Recreation Committee is any specific mention of the word priorities, although tonight's revision does say that the majority of resources should be directed to those under 18 and over 55. I think the mission statement should explicitly say that the Recreation Department should evaluate the degree to which the programs are reaching various elements of the population that the department is seeking to serve, always recognizing that some groups are harder to reach and involved than others. For example, I've heard the programs for seniors are doing well, and many of these programs are completely subscribed or oversubscribed. I've also heard wonderful things about the youth basketball program and that it had over 500 kids involved this past year. That's terrific. And from what I see happening in the community center when I visit in the evenings, there are lots of active classes for adults, pottery, art, and these things seem to be doing very well, and I think that's wonderful, too. While we may be weaker, however, is with the programs for low-income and minority teens and their families, including older teens and people in their younger twenties. I know that the Recreation Committee has discussed a variety of such programs from time to time, but it has been difficult getting them going. They may require special efforts at outreach, for example, health, wellness, nutrition, maternal and childcare, job preparation, job referrals, job bank, et cetera. And I think they should involve some young people themselves in doing the planning and setting priorities. I would also like to suggest that it would be good if we could try to develop some additional sources of funding to help subsidize tuition for lower-income individuals in youth in a variety of the city's programs, especially for childrens and teens. So I'd like to recommend that the mission statements state those kinds of things explicitly as priorities, namely to continue to do the things we're already doing well, but to make a greater effort in the areas where more work needs to be done, so those programs can truly serve the community as a whole. I think that in order to do that, the mission statement should be accompanied by a table of data showing how many people in various age groups, male and female, and by race, ethnicity, are participating in the Recreation Department's programs, along with whatever data may be available as to whether any of those are low-income. I think that the Recreation Department is already gathering a lot of that kind of information, so the principal change would be to put that data together in a few summary tables for use by the city council in its program oversight capacity. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. And could we get a copy of your remarks? Thank you. That would be helpful.
We don't have a few questions.
Sure. Yeah.
That would be nice.
There were some details in there that it would be very helpful to have. I was making some notes, but I couldn't keep up. Anybody else? Don't all run up at once. Okay. We will go along to council comments. Councilmember Wright.
Well, I want to say that Tacoma Foundation put on a wonderful beer fest. It was quite impressive. I only stayed for about an hour, but I think there was close to 400 people there. Sounds like this is a growing event and great. It raises money for their grants program, and it was just great to see everybody and hats off to the Tacoma Foundation for putting that together. I did also want to mention that hopefully we won't need any of the future meetings between now and when the new council takes over, but if we don't get through the discussion for the vision of the Recreation Services and reach agreement tonight, we will have to meet again at some point. So hopefully, that'll be incentive for us all to be clear and concise and come to agreement around that. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention the city manager, not that I'm expecting an answer, but I do think we need to come up with a plan going forward for 36 Philadelphia. It's been, this was one of the first issues I started to work on when I was on the council. I know it's a complex issue, but I was talking at the beer fest to get with some constituents, someone who lives near across the street from it. I do think we need to figure out what our plan is going forward. It can't be something where we just continue to let it languish. At some point, the thing is just gonna fall down. It's already a safety and probably a fire hazard. So, and I know that Councilmember Robinson will continue to be working on this issue even after he leaves the council, because it's directly behind his house.
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. On a follow-up on Councilmember Wright's comments, I see that they have begun work on the House in Sycamore Avenue, 7123 Sycamore. And so that's certainly a blessing to that neighborhood, that the Housing Department has been able to work that project through to where we are. It looks like we're now going towards a positive solution to that. I just wanted this evening to welcome to the city the new residents of the Maple Towers Apartments at 7610 Maple Avenue. That's the project that was Montgomery Housing Partnership recently completed and a project where we have given some tax relief to Montgomery Housing Partnership to make sure they were able to secure the funding for that project. So far, I've only met two of the new residents. They just started moving in this week. Michael Booker, who is a retired military, is moving in there, and Darryl Perry, who has been active in some of the city events in the past, he's also known as Smokey D. He is a barbecue cooker, and so it's a, both good additions to the neighborhood. I look forward to meeting all the other new residents there at Maple Towers. And I believe that's all, but I may ring my bell again if I need something else. Thank you.
Councilmember Clay.
Couple of comments tonight. The first one is that in reviewing the materials for the recreation discussion, I noticed that we have a revised paper from the Recreation Committee, but we didn't include in the package the piece that Councilmember Seaman, Councilmember Wright, and I worked on, which essentially was a project to create a framework that looks at how we've been talking at recreation and then taking all of the materials that Councilmember Wright had developed and integrating those into that framework structure. And so when I read the commentary for this evening, I see the framework structure is there. The Recreation Committee kept the framework structure, but there was actually a lot of detail and I think points to discuss within the paper that the three of us wrote. So if we want to have a quicker discussion that doesn't have us end up tabling the Recreation Committee discussion, so that we can have another meeting the night before the election, I think maybe we should get some copies of that, so we could talk about it tonight. I have it on my computer. I could email it to other people if everyone has a computer up, but I'm sure that that will be a point of discussion. The second comment that I have is that there's still a party on at my house. It's still happening on Saturday, October 29th. It's gonna be from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, but the new piece, well, I have two new pieces of information the mayor says is gonna come, which I appreciate. And the other piece of information is that our band is Ms. Friedrich, who many people in Tacoma Park know, because she played at Tacoma Park Folk Festival this year, but she's also the piano teacher of many, 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 many people in Tacoma Park. And I think, Dan, you know her from playing and playing around, so things would be great. And I'm looking forward to folks coming in as a potluck, and I will provide drinks for folks, but come on by from 10 to 8, the Boy Scout Pancake Supper.
You said 10 to 8.
I should've said 6 to 10, because then what I wanted to say was the Boy Scout Pancake Supper runs that night from 4 until 8. So you can go load up on pancakes and support the Boy Scouts first, and then come by my house. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Apropos some previous comments about problems or progress with regard to getting properties renovated in this, or something, you know, being concluded with certain chronically bad properties. I wanted to announce a little fragment of good news when it comes to the code enforcement efforts of this city, and that is, is that the city in Ward 6 on Jackson Avenue today was literally able to tow away a dump truck that had been sitting in the driveway in the front of a house on Jackson Avenue for many, many years. It had totally inoperable, flat tires, and the owner of the property, who lives elsewhere, and the house has been vacant as well for many, many years. Just, it's not falling down. The house is not the problem. It's just what's outside and around it. Through the slow process of going through the Circuit Court here in Montgomery County, the city was able to finally get an abatement order from the judge that allowed the city, with proper due notice to the owner, to literally remove the dump truck, which has been an enormous eyesore for, as I said, a really long time. And I just want to add to this, is just to point out that when you, when the city has the occasional property owner, unfortunately, there aren't a lot of them in the city, who literally just refuse to cooperate when they can. It's a different story when you have got property owners who are financially unable to do anything, but when people are fully capable of doing something and they just simply refuse to do anything, and they play the legal game for all it's worth to drag things out for, through appeals and grace periods, and then amended appeals in the courts, all for no particular point whatsoever, as is illustrated in this case, it takes an enormous toll on our staff's time, way out of proportion to the, to the particular situation. Time, staff time costs the city money, and this is a classic example of many hours, our code enforcement staff, our county attorney's office, working on this, because the absentee owners or whoever the owner might be is able to kind of run circles around the law, the law, but the city and the enforcement people have to follow the rule of law and go through the proper procedures. It takes a really long time, and residents, nearby residents can truly get frustrated and get angry sometimes with the, with the city staff, when the city is simply doing what it is supposed to do, the, the city staff, and really the anger needs to be directed to the property owner, who's just really taking advantage. So I just wanted to make that little sermonette. The other thing I wanted to say is that my wife and I attended the Beer Fest for the Tacoma Foundation. It is probably one of the most delightful events that I've been to in this city or anywhere else for years. It was terrifically well-done. The beers were delicious, all the varieties. The food was just great. The bratwurst was great. The music, we couldn't figure out why anybody in the world would want to call their band sciatica, and then we realized that it was three older gentlemen, old guys like me and even I, who were doing it, and then it all became very apparent. And they were great. And I told Frank Abrilian, the president of the Tacoma Foundation, that I think she, with this annual event, has hit this as a, hit the home run out of the ballpark. And I'm sure that next year, it will be even bigger. My only concern is that it might get too big someday, but it is just, it was a delightful event, and my praise goes out to everybody who worked on that.
And I'll jump in with a quick ditto on that. The, I thought the Tacoma Foundation Spear Fest was an outstanding event, and I so enjoyed it that I recommended to the foundation board members who I saw there that they should do it four times a year instead of one time a year, and they groaned, because they said it was a lot of work. And I said, "Well, maybe at least twice a year." And my, my observation of the event was that it appears that there's a good business opportunity for somebody to open a beer garden in Tacoma Park, and I know that was part of the, the design charrette for New Hampshire Avenue and the New Ave. There was even talk of putting such a facility up there at the corner of Sligo Creek Parkway and New Hampshire Avenue as just an idea that came out of the charrette. So if anybody is feeling like they want to pursue a business opportunity, I think there's money to be made there. I also wanted to point out to my colleagues, a reminder that this Thursday evening is the Maryland Municipal League Montgomery Chapter Meeting, and it's gonna be very interesting. We're gonna be talking with the county council about legislative priorities, theirs and ours, and see what's, what anybody is coming up with for the session in Annapolis. The special session in Annapolis started today. I don't think too much is gonna come up in the special session, other than redistricting, but in the regular session in January. And we're gonna be discussing, in the business meeting part of it after that, we're gonna be discussing both the county executive's proposed curfew and also getting an update on the situation with the Tax Duplication Task Force and some various, various things that have been flying around about tax duplication. So it should be a very informative meeting, and it'll probably be a little bit longer than usual, since we're gonna have the time with the county council. And the final thing I wanted to mention was a letter which I just opened today, which I thought I would just read a section of it, just to make sure that everybody knows where we are, and this is from the county council president, Valerie Irvin, and it's summarizing the conversation I had with her about the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan and the design guidelines. And she says, "Based on our conversation, I understand that you prefer that the county council not act on the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan until the planning board has considered the related design guidelines and taken a position on the recommendations submitted by the city of Tacoma Park. While the council does not take action on the design guidelines, there's a strong link between the guidelines and sector plan, and I understand your preference that we have received the guidelines before acting on the sector plan. We also have received your recommended changes to the sector plan, which the council will consider before acting on the sector plan." So that formalizes the delay of the sector plan probably until January. Any other council comments? Seeing none, move along to the city manager's comments.
Just a brief update on the Public Works Facility. We did get our occupancy permit for both the sanitation building and the admin building, which is good news. If you've been over there, which Councilmember Seaman may have, they're ripping into the maintenance building, which was one of the add-ons that the council had approved. They did find some asbestos, not surprisingly, in that building. What I know right now is it seems to be a small amount, but I'll probably have more information later this week, and we'll share that with you. We're still looking at a November, kind of a mid-November completion date. One of the things I will do, I know I've given you sort of bits and pieces of some of the financial aspects of the project. I'll try to pull all that together this week and get you kind of a broader picture of where we're at. As I had mentioned a meeting or so ago with the time extensions, we have run into some additional costs, basically, for our construction consultant, for example, who had a contract that was going through the end of September. The general contractor, not surprisingly, has asked for some extended general conditions to cover their overhead, having their job superintendent on-site and things of that nature. We're still negotiating what that amount will be, but I will try to get that information to you later this week.
And that's based solely on the weather delay?
That will be, what we will focus on is things that are outside of their control. I think we do feel that there are some portions of the delay that may be attributable to the contractor. Most of it, though, is gonna be things outside of their control, such as some utility delays, weather, and I do think it's fair to allow them some extended general conditions for those things that they had no control over.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Okay, seeing none, we don't have any minutes to adopt, so we'll move to the special session. And the first item is a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for the Public Works Security Access System. Move the ordinance. Oh, I think Councilmember Clay moved it. Councilmember Wright, second. Are you gonna?
Actually, I believe Abel is still here. He's probably running on his way down, but I'll go ahead and pinch-hit. I think you're a little bit ahead, and I don't think he was expecting that.
Well, we're only five minutes ahead, and I hear a door.
I'll go ahead.
No?
Nope. As mentioned in the cover sheet, there were some aspects of this installation that were covered under the contract with Keller Brothers. Part of that included the installation of wiring and for the electronic door and gate access, but the actual purchase of the equipment, the software and the installation was actually the responsibility of the city. Our information systems manager, Abel Castillo, got a number of bids, three bids specifically. As you can note, there was a fairly wide range of pricing, but he did feel comfortable with the lowest bid, which was innovative security systems. That is for $16,863, and it is his recommendation that we award a bid to this vendor. I gave you intro for you, Abel. You ran downstairs. Abel, can you talk, I kind of went through the bids, but can you talk a little bit about where the, the actual card readers would go?
Yeah, we are planning to put card readers in the gates primarily, to allow entry after hours, and also some key doors throughout the two buildings that have been completed. The sanitation building has some storage that we want to monitor access to, so does the shop area, and of course, the administration building also has a couple of entries. A total of 12 doors, I think, and the two gates, makes a total of 14 places. What will happen after hours, when police or public works vehicle have to go in or out, they'll use the employee swipe cards to, to gain access in the gate wall. No more keys, which I think it's been a nightmare. And everybody's got an ID supposedly. The solution is a hosted solution, which is something that a lot of government agencies are going to as far as the monitoring and controlling of it, but the hardware is the same that we have here in the building, so we try to keep things that were compatible.
So it looks the same, but it's different than this building?
Software is different in this building, but the same IDs will work, and it's the same hardware. We use Von Duprin hardware, which has been pretty reliable and has been tested in the industry. That's what we're putting up there, too.
And so this, so this is in some ways a different solution than this building, therefore maybe the same people who were supplying it didn't bid because it's different, or?
Oh, they did bid, but our, our solution that we have here is not a hosted solution. It's a hardware-specific solution, so it was a lot more costly. And one of the, the highest bid that you saw there was for an existing or an equal solution to what we have, and it's just, it was, it was expensive. So we, we thought about this hosted solution. As long as the hardware's the same and the IDs work, we thought it would be, we'd get the same solution.
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for staying tonight to meet with us. I know in the past, we've had, there have been some communications issues between Hefner Park and the, the system that unlocks the doors there and gives access to people here in the community center. Has that been, I know that's been resolved for Hefner Park, but do we have similar concerns? Is there anything we're gonna have to change to make this work with the Public Works Facility?
Well, I think some of the issues with Hefner Park were probably also operator, or us learning the system. We've come a long ways, and there has been improved communication. As long as you have good communication to the equipment, you can, you can override, program, make changes, and I think the improved communications of the Public Works will help that. Yeah. And Hefner Park has been pretty stable for a while. I don't want to mention, I don't want to fix it, but.
Nothing's real wood anymore to knock on, but yeah, thank you. It has been.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Robinson.
If it's hosted, does that mean there are ongoing costs?
The cost would be if we upgrade the software, there is no ongoing cost, we were told.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. Good question.
Any other questions? Any public comment on this single reading ordinance? Seeing none, we'll vote on this. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper. Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Thank you. Carries unanimously. Thank you. The next reading, next item is a frustrating ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 2.12 Administrative Regulations. I was thinking maybe Councilmember Schultz wanted to move this.
Thanks.
Yes, do you want to move it?
Yeah.
As long as you have good communication to the equipment, you can override, program, make changes, and I think the improved communications of the Public Works will help that. And Hefner Park has been pretty stable for a while. I don't want to mention, I don't want to fix it, but.
Nothing's real wood anymore to knock on, but yeah, thank you, it has been.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
If it's hosted, does that mean there are ongoing costs?
No. The cost would be if we upgrade the software, there is no ongoing cost, we were told.
Okay.
That's good. Good question.
Any other questions? Any public comment on this single reading ordinance? Seeing none, we'll vote on this. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer?
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Thank you. Carries unanimously. Thank you. The next reading, next item is a frustrating ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 2.12 Administrative Regulations. I was thinking maybe Councilmember Schultz wanted to move this.
Thanks.
Yes, do you want to move it?
Yeah. Yes, I will move it.
And then Councilmember Wright can second it.
I was just curious why Councilmember Schultz would want to move this versus any other member of the council.
I was quiet, because I thought you wanted to move it.
Because he put a bunch of work into it.
Oh, okay. So is it seconded?
Yes, it is.
Oh, wonderful.
But not by me.
Who wants to?
Sure. So this is the first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 2.12, the Administrative Regulations Chapter, and I know you have dealt with this several times this year. After the last changes were made to the chapter, Councilmember Schultz offered to do some work on the chapter to make it somewhat more readable and understandable, and he has done that successfully, I think. And for the most part, most of the changes are not substantive. There are a few that are substantive, and that is Councilmember, and I should say that the city attorney and staff have reviewed his recommendations and made a few additional small changes to what Councilmember Schultz had done. The first substantive change would be to lengthen the comment period for city boards and the public to a proposed administrative regulation. The comment period would be extended from 21 to 30 days. The staff didn't have any opposition to that, although it is worth noting that it, in terms of the newsletter schedule, it may mean, could conceivably mean, an extra month before something, a regulation is finally, the notice of final action is published, but we don't see that that's a huge concern from our perspective, but did just want to point that out. The city attorney in reviewing the proposal looked at the emergency regulations, Section 2.12.100, and that section, when she read it, she realized that it had said, "An emergency regulation must pertain to situations presenting a clear and present danger to the public health, safety, or general welfare," and in her opinion, it would, that would pretty much mean there would never be an emergency regulation with that definition, and she recommended changing that definition to situations in which immediate action is needed to protect the public health, safety, or general welfare. I'm not aware of an emergency regulation that has been proposed or promulgated in recent years, certainly not since my tenure, but it's conceivable that there may be a need for it at some point, and clear and present danger is probably a high standard to meet for that.
But it's such a great book title.
Isn't it? And I think with that going through it, the draft ordinance is redlined, and I'm assuming that many of you have looked at it, and Councilmember Schultz, you may have something to add. You certainly did a lot of work on this.
Yeah, thank you, Jesse. And I took the time to actually read the ordinance as it had been written even before we made the amendments this past summer, in order to get this ordinance sort of in, so that it could be implemented. And I realized in reading it that I couldn't understand it, basically, and I found, and I, so I offered to Jesse to see if I couldn't clean it up, and she said that she thought that would be very welcome, and I found just internal contradictions within the text. I found unnecessary redundancies, not that there are anything like unnecessary redundancy, but, you know, let's just say redundancies in it, some things that just were plain confusing and needed definition, where there were no definitions, and that sort of stuff. And so it ended up, just the changes that I made really, almost all of them were in those kind of categories, not changing the purpose or the substance of the ordinance in any substantial way whatsoever, but just making it understandable. And I think anytime you have an ordinance that's just simply not understandable or confusing, you have a potential problem on your hands. So I don't know, that's what I tried to do. Feedback I've gotten from staff is that it was a useful exercise. And with regard to the one thing about extending the period for public comment from 21 to 30 days, I suggested that simply because a lot of these committees that we have, that work, that we appoint, only meet once a month as it is. And if the timing is wrong, then 21 days could elapse between normal committee meetings, which would then obligate a committee to kind of convene, have a special meeting, which of course is difficult sometimes to do out of the normal, regular order of things, and so I thought extending it to 30 days would at least make it easier for whatever committees might be interested to actually have the time and occasion to participate in the review without having to turn themselves into knots. That's all I really needed to say at this point.
Questions or comments? Is there public comment on this frustrating ordinance amending the code for the administrative regulations? Seeing none, we can vote on this at first reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it on that one. And we will move to a first reading ordinance authorizing the FY 2012 Budget Amendment Number One. And I imagine we want to hear the details first from the city manager.
It's not as scary as it looks. About two and a half pages of this, basically, it concerns the allocation of the monies in the budget for the wage allocation. As we're going through the development of the budget and the council's going through the budget process, we tend to sort of allocate a lump amount that can be more easily changed and modified with the council's direction, rather than spreading it across all the departments. Then, once the budget is approved and we get into the beginning of the fiscal year, we take that allocation and distribute it to all the various cost centers in the budget. So that's about two and a half pages of what you have before you. Some other changes I'll just highlight very briefly. Since the council adopted the budget back in May, we were awarded, as you know, a $20,000 grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust for the Flower Avenue Green Street project. That revenue needs to be recognized in the budget. We also received reimbursement for our legal fees associated with 7123 Sycamore. This was the property that Councilmember Siemens was talking about earlier this evening. The city acted as a trustee for one of the owners of that property, and as part of that, we were entitled to receive reimbursement for some of our hard costs associated with serving as the trustee and handling some of the legal transactions involved with the sale of that property. We got just over $11,000 back from the sale. Earlier this year, we had also received some donations from several community organizations to benefit the recreation department, specifically the Tacoma Park Lions Club and the American Legion. These funds were donated to the city for programming at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec. Center. What the budget amendment would do is recognize the receipt of those donations, as well as the expenditure of those funds in those program line items. Probably one of the largest items that's included in the budget amendment is the renovation to the Public Works facility, as we talked about earlier. The really wet weather in the spring and some utility delays actually pushed more of the project construction into fiscal year 12 as opposed to fiscal year 11, so the budget amendment would recognize that and appropriate $915,000 for that work to be completed. These were monies, to a large extent, that were expected to be expended by June 30, so it's sort of a timing issue for the most part. And a number of just very small projects, a community grant project funded last year that was not completed. The city arborist has asked for an additional allocation from the tree fund to do some additional work. There are some dead trees on Manor Circle that need to be replaced, and in accordance with the council's prior direction, we'll be removing some sweetgum trees on woodland, basically replanting those elsewhere on public property, probably in city parks, is my understanding what the arborist intends to do, and planting some new trees on woodland. And then lastly, this was just an item, I guess, that wouldn't say got overlooked, but we were uncertain of the timing. The council by ordinance 2010-47 had authorized the city to, basically as a financial contribution, give Park and Planning $25,000 towards the demolition of a property on Sligo Mill Road. There were some complications that Park and Planning had run into, so it wasn't kind of on our radar screen that they would actually be in a position to move forward with the demolition this fiscal year. So this budget amendment would also allocate the funds for that demolition. In the special revenue fund, which as the council knows, is the mechanism we use to track grant-funded activities, you can just kind of read through the cover sheet. There's nothing really earth-shattering, but basically some projects that either where we spent grant funds down faster than we had envisioned, some new grants that got received, and basically just making some corrections to those funds. I can certainly answer any questions you have about any of the specific projects in the special revenue fund. One of the more substantive changes that this budget amendment would effectuate is the speed camera fund, as we talked about during the budget process at that time. We had two pending speed camera installations. When I prepared my budget, one was on University Boulevard. That camera actually went into operation back in March, and the other installation was on East West Highway, and that camera just went live in the last few weeks. At the time I was putting together the budget, we obviously had no data for a camera that wasn't even up and running, and we really had no history on the University Boulevard camera. The University Boulevard camera now has been operational for about six months. We do have kind of a track record on that, as well as some better data on some of the other cameras, particularly with the work being completed on Ethan Allen, obviously when it had the huge holes, there wasn't much of anything anyone could do without blowing out a tire. But we sort of went through and putting together this budget amendment, looked to see how revenues were actually comparing to what I had assumed, and factoring in the operation of the University Boulevard camera. The net effect of that review is that I would recommend the speed camera fund revenues be increased by $700,000 for fiscal year 12. This figure will be, need to be reevaluated once we actually have some data on the East West Highway camera. But if the council accepts this change, speed camera revenues would go up by $700,000, and fund expenditures related to the actual operation of the program itself would increase by $280,000. That's the payment to the vendor. Their residual amount of the fund increases because of the allocation for wage adjustments for employees that are charged to that fund. I know it's always of interest to several of you, the general contingency account balance would decrease by just under $16,000. What would be left in the general contingency account after this amendment would be just over $82,000. I did want to just note tonight, I need to actually dig into it a little bit more, but we did get an invoice from our workers' comp carrier indicating that the rates that we had assumed and that they had given us would be, in effect, are actually slightly higher. So it looks like we may need to appropriate some additional funding for workers' comp insurance this year. I do want to talk to our broker and kind of get a better sense of what's going on with that, but there may be a change in that line item for second reading when this budget amendment comes back before you next week.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Wright?
I have two questions. One was, I noticed the small grant funds to the Crossroads Farmer Market had not been used as of June 30, and what's the, what happened there? Why did that not happen?
Look at Jesse, because she actually worked with them. I believe some of the funds were actually expended, they just didn't close out the whole amount?
No, and we didn't pick up on this. Part of their program, as you may know, that program involves working with Rolling Terrace Elementary School, and part of their project was intended to be done in the fall. We didn't pick up on that. It was really, I take responsibility for that, didn't recognize that it would be running into the next fiscal year. So really, that was their plan all along. It just wasn't my plan, and so that's the reason for that. They are on the verge of closing it out now, but it was intended to continue into the fall.
My second question has to do with the speed camera fund revenue. So if I recall correctly, when we saw the estimates on this camera versus the East West Highway camera, the university camera was significantly smaller in terms of the number of people viewed as speeding that might trigger the camera. I know, you know, behaviors will change, hopefully, as a result of the cameras, but my real question is, how close are we getting to the point at which we actually have to start giving money to the state? Because I think once you hit like 10% of your budget or something like that, or, I remember it was modified, but I'm just kind of wondering where we are related to that.
I can actually give you a copy of those reports. We had to file one for FY 10 and one for FY 11. I'm not sure if Yvonda has filed the FY 11 one, because the audit is not yet complete. By way of explanation, what the state law required to do is, they finally did develop a little worksheet several years after passing the law that kind of guides you through it, but you can net out your, in our case, the payment to ACS, State Mutual Solutions. We can net out the staff that are actually assigned to that specific program, not just charged to the fund, but are actually working on checking the cameras. We then take that net figure, as you're alluding to, Councilmember Wright, divided by total city revenues, including any grant funds, speed camera revenues themselves, and once that number, that percentage goes over 10%, we are required by state law to remit anything over that 10% to the state. We still had quite a bit to go when I looked at 11, but that was obviously before the East West Highway camera comes on board. But what I can do for the next meeting, assuming Yvonda does have it done, is just give you a copy of what she filed with the state.
And there was an earlier provision, I think, is gone also, like you couldn't accumulate, if the accumulation got too big in the total dollars in the speed camera fund, then you had to give something back. That's gone, right? So even if we, this goes up and it takes us a lot to figure out how we're going to spend it, whether it's on sidewalk provision building or other public safety items, we have time to do that still. Is that correct?
That's correct. The prior version of the speed camera law basically counted anything that you just carried over from one fiscal year to a next. So there was really, at that point, a lot of pressure on jurisdictions to hurry up and spend what you had, rather than being able to aggregate funds if you had a huge project. That provision was taken out several years ago.
Okay. I'd be very, you know, I'd very much like to see that analysis you said you'd provide us. And I'll be, when I'm off the council, probably we'll have the estimates on what the New Hampshire Avenue, not the New Hampshire, the University Boulevard, no, sorry, the East West Highway right before New Hampshire Avenue will produce, but I remember from my back-of-the-envelope calculation, based on the number of speeders in that situation, if they don't change their behavior, I'd be surprised if we didn't end up going over and have to remit to the state.
Could I just respond on that real quick? And just say that coincidentally, the community in Ward 6 has given the green light to the Department of Public Works to start building sidewalks and using, some of that money will be drawn down. I don't know if that affects the equation. Does not. In other words, if you expended it, that's not the criteria. It's just total, it's just income.
It's basically, yeah, it's net income as a percentage of total city revenues.
Fine, I, sorry.
Is your sense that we'll get a similar understanding of the revenues from the 410 camera probably in about six months, and that'll be part of another budget amendment before the end of the year?
Yes. You know, the camera just went live, I mean, we'll probably have.
I think today was the day that it started having real tickets instead of warnings.
It had real tickets and. It had real tickets, and, you know, we'll check and see what happens. I think part of what impacts some of the cameras that we have is that you also have a lot of non-recurring users. I mean, you can look at some of the revenues, particularly sometimes during the summer months, where you might have tourists coming down, you know, New Hampshire Avenue, heading towards the district. You know, and they may just be one-time people who hit the camera and basically don't have a chance to learn their lesson. They just get whacked the one time. If we have enough data, we may actually come back, Mayor, early in the year. I know I've talked to you about sometime in January, when the new council is seated, wanting to talk to the new council about some thought staff has about use of speed camera funds going forward.
Right. And then, for second reading, will you have any additional information on the public works facility in terms of, kind of where we are on the total project?
Yeah, I have most of those numbers together, because as I was putting together the budget amendment, I just went back and looked at some of those figures myself to look at timing differences. I hope to actually have that to you, maybe by the end of this week, that I can send to you by email. I would note that the figure that is included in the budget amendment does include, at least my best guess, contingencies for the extended payment, extended conditions request of Keller, as well as a contingency for the public works maintenance building. At the time I did the figures, I wasn't aware of the asbestos, but we did build something in, just because when you have an older structure like that, it's not surprising that something might be found. But, yeah, I'll have those hopefully to you by the end of this week. If not, I'll certainly get it to you in advance of Monday night's meeting.
Okay. Any other questions on budget amendment number one? Any public comment on budget amendment number one? Seeing none, we'll vote on that. All those in favor of first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it on that one. Why don't we take our scheduled break, and we will come back shortly for our two work session items, a discussion of... We have returned from our break, and we'll now move on to a discussion of the recurring discussion of vision for the recreation services. After the last discussion, we knew that there was an upcoming meeting of the Recreation Committee. And so we have with us at the dais the chair and vice chair, Jay Keller and Cindy Dibala. And I thought it would be helpful, since they worked with the Recreation Department and tried to digest everything that had gone on up to that point, and try and help us move along to where we want to be with generating a mission statement and coming up with some goals for the department. And so I wanted to give them a chance to kind of walk us through their attempt to pull together all of the various pieces that have been floating around as we've been having this discussion. I also knew that we were getting close to the end of the term for this council, and that this is one of the items that we wanted to make sure that we tried to complete before we finished with this council. It's also that, in the beginning of when we talked about wanting to do this, we talked about a timeframe. The original timeframe was proposed to be something on the order of January. I pushed for, and we eventually were trying to complete this by September 30th. That obviously has not happened. And the city manager has kind of gotten to a point where she's feeling like we need to, it would be helpful to her in going forward and going through in the process for looking for a recreation director to make sure that we are comfortable with what we have as a group, and that it's clear to her and to the staff to make sure that they know going forward what this is. We kind of want to get it right. We don't want to rush it and end up having some, having to revisit it because there's some issues with what was meant by something. So we're trying to accommodate that, get to a point where this council can say, this is, this represents a place where we're comfortable, where we would like to be with this, while at the same time recognizing that we have now gotten close enough to the election that there is probably going to have to be some continuing discussion of this with the new council, just to make sure that there's a comfort level there, and that this is going to carry over to them. And so I wanted to do whatever we can tonight to try and get to a place where this council is comfortable with what we have to say, we've taken it this far, we think this goes all the way, or most of the way, toward whatever it is that we want to do, recognize that we may have to kind of carry it over a little bit with the new council just to make sure that there's buy-in by that group as well, since they'll be the ones who will be dealing with the implementation and whatever comes from this. So if you both want to give us what resulted from your discussions.
Yeah, so when we first, when we first sent something to you, it was, it was not in the form of a mission statement and goals. We were a time-meter approach, and what we had heard from the interviews we did with community leaders and so forth. And so we thought it was only fair to, since some of you took a crack at a mission statement that we ought to take over a latitude. So what we tried to do, though, was to look at the different things that had been written and try to boil them down to what we saw as sort of the essential themes that we, that looked to us, that pretty much everybody agreed on. And we tried to split it into, you know, what a council, this council might do, sort of broad brush, and what questions you might leave to pose to the incoming council. So that's why it's only one page long, and that's why it's set up as a mission. Who we serve, how we serve, going to look familiar, because that's the way some of the council proposals were structured.
Yeah. And I think what's interesting is, we looked at Josh's first presentation, and then we looked at the revised one that I think a number of the council members got together and talked about. And there was a lot that the committee really agreed with. We liked a lot of the approach to it. We did feel that we wanted to do a fairly broad mission statement that gave a lot of flexibility to whoever the director is. We also wanted to throw back to the council the suggestion that the staff work with both the committee and with other citizens groups to kind of develop program and to really jump off of that charge that you gave us at the middle of the summer of making sure that there was lots of citizen feedback. So that was something that we proposed in here. But as Cindy said, we kind of boiled it down into really condensed version of things. The mission statement is pretty general on stuff, but we think it touches upon the core pieces that are, that recreation is responsible for.
And we thought it was important that the mission be to strengthen the community, not just to deliver specific programs. So that's one change you might note from some of the things you've seen before. That was also something that came out in the recreation staff interviews about the current mission statement, that the one thing they felt was missing was this emphasis on the community aspect of things.
Yeah. And we did do a fair amount of discussion within the committee of this idea, I think, that you kicked around with. Well, should it be a very broad, when we initially proposed this, we wanted to change the name of the Recreation Department to kind of show the breadth of the things that they do. I think that that's a bit of an open question. But I think the question that was asked in Josh's first memo of, you know, are they providing social services? How broad do we deal with these issues? Was stuff that we dealt with in the committee meeting of talking about that. And a concern that it not be too broad. But I think in the second version that we saw from last week, there were discussions about, I think there was a term of employability, of working unemployability, but not having kind of job training and things like that. So we were trying to figure out, well, what does the council mean by, they like the idea of employability, but they don't want to do resume writing, and they don't want to do job training things? So we tried to blend that into a broader standpoint of, and some of the desired outcomes. We liked the model of the integrated service delivery, and think that that's an important area to look at. We were trying to think of the models that would work on that. And I think the three that were in the original suggestions had the pool and, what was the other one? There were a couple others, but the pool is not, it's not Tacoma Park's pool, really. So that was one we were kind of going, well, it's a great idea, but we have to figure out how it fits into existing programs.
So to summarize, so as a mission, we see that the department's mission would be to strengthen community through providing recreational programs and services broadly defined to city residents that emphasize a number of things that you all have discussed as important. Who we serve, there seems to be a great deal of agreement. Provide programs that can be used by anyone who lives here, but really focus on youth and seniors. How we serve, these, four of these are, we hope, extracted from what was in the memo, the longer memo that Josh and a couple other people wrote. So the first one, as Jay said, recreation staff work in collaboration with the committee, but also with a wide range of partners to identify and utilize the assets that we've got here and to build creative, integrated programs. Second one, to use the integrated service delivery model, because everybody seems to think that's a great way to pull things together, to create and deliver traditional recreation services, and to the degree that other kinds of programs fit in with that, to do that, too. Third, to set fees so that there's a price structure that benefits residents, and that there's a scholarship program. Fourth, develop performance-based budgeting by service area, by youth, by teens, by seniors, so that the new council can look at how these programs are working and which groups of programs are cost-effective. Fifth, this is something that we talked about in our first, in our first report. This is something that came out with staff and with community interviews, and something that you all have talked about, but which hasn't actually been listed, I don't think. Which is to actively promote the programs, to not just wait for folks to come in. So, mission, who we serve, how we do it, and then the goals, the outcomes. What we provide in these specific program areas, we're suggesting that that be something that the department do in conjunction with the committee and a group of others, and then come back to the new council with, okay, here's the program areas, here's the goals, the outcomes. For example, youth development, here's the things we expect to see by what we're going to do for youth. Rather than try to tackle that in the next couple of weeks. So in a nutshell, that's what we're suggesting. And discussion or comment? Questions first, yeah, while we're here.
And first, thank you all very much for putting the additional effort into doing all that in your meeting. And we really appreciate it. I see a number of people who have questions or comments. Councilmember Siemens.
Oh, the little lights.
Thank you, Mary.
No, that's your on-off button for your mic? And the one on the top is the, I have a comment.
That's it.
I'll stop.
All right. Well, as Mayor said, thank you very much. I think it's, it's great to see the way this whole process is developing, because we're really, we've been talking about a new way for the council to deal with committees. And I think this is an experiment that's going very well in how the council is dealing with this issue with the Recreation Committee and with staff involvement. And it's, I think the, the thing that I see is, it seems like we started out as three separate entities, and we seem to be coming together and working much more closely together for the common goal and the common good of the community. And so I'd just like to say thank you for your work in helping to bring that together. Also, thank you for, you know, what you presented here tonight. There's nothing in this that you've presented that I disagree with. I think the, my bottom line is that the council is responsible for setting the policy that's going to give staff guidance. We have, over the last, I don't know how many years, heard a lot of complaining from community members, from some of us on the council. And I've been one of those who have expressed concern about the Recreation Department not doing what we wanted. But I was included in the group that never said what we did want, right? And so as much as I appreciate the broadness of the mission statement that you provided, and I think the mission statement is good, I would support that mission statement. But I think we really need to be specific on what we want, because I think, from what I heard in your presentation tonight, you're still not sure if that's what the council wants. Right, and I can appreciate that the staff members who are here must have the same feeling. What is it you really want us to do? You know, they put in a lot of good work and a lot of time in providing service to the community, but nobody said what we really, what are we really trying to accomplish? This is a step, I think, in that direction, but I'm not sure that it's really as tight as what goals would be. I still want to see specific goals of what do we want to accomplish in the next year or the next five years? And at some point, how are we going to know when we get there, or if we got there? And so in some, each of those goals is going to have to have some type of measurements, which you alluded to tonight. But I think there needs to be more specificity in the way that we document those for the sake of the staff's sanity and for us to know. I mean, it's ridiculous. I don't want to sit here, you know, two years from now, and all of us saying, we did it or we didn't do it. It ought to be on paper, what it is we wanted to accomplish. And so I agree with that. I, I like the way people are coming together on this. I would really like to see the staff, the Recreation Committee, and the council be at the table to iron out the goals and the measurements. I think it's the council's responsibility, in the end, to define the goals and measurements. And then, it's staff's responsibility, maybe working with the Recreation Committee, to carry that to the next step, which is, how are we going to do this? Right, where staff takes more of a leadership role, and the council sits back in saying, you know, what programs are we going to do to accomplish these goals that have been set for us by the policymakers? Okay, so, that said, you know, I'm not sure that that's exactly what you're proposing for the next steps, but those are the next steps that I would like to see, and we'll see how we get there.
I mean, I think we were looking for, one, an agreement on a mission statement first, to go forward with that, and then to do goals. And I think it was really the committee's sense of working together with the Recreation Department to come up with the more specific goals and draw in other resources in the community as we need them. And I don't know, here's a point of ignorance on my part, I don't know how much the city council actually meets with staff in the way that we meet with staff. I know that when you did the... I know that when you did the report before, Josh said he interviewed the whole city council to find out what their feeling was on recreation, but I don't know, I don't know quite what the interaction is with the city council in terms of staff and that dialogue. But that's certainly something that we saw as a value added to figure out ways of, how do you get more of the community to get involved in this process to say what we want? And in the summer survey work, that was certainly our intention, was to say to people, you know, who has used recreation services? What did you like about it? What didn't you like about it? And to use that information that we've had for past surveys to figure out, well, this kind of gives us some of what we're looking at in terms of our recreation program, what we want, what the, what the city members want.
I fully support what you've outlined as far as how it works from my perspective is, you're the workhorse for the council. You're, you're the group that we depend on for advice and we can't work on all the different issues that we work on at that level of detail. So I would expect that, you know, you're working with the Recreation Department. But I can also, I also feel that there are some council members who have expertise in the area of writing goals and reaching community members. Again, you've mentioned, you know, how do, how do the recreation participants feel about the programs and what are the strengths and what are the weaknesses? But we also want to hear from those who don't participate on what it is that would bring them into the programs, but.
And we got some of that back from the survey work of people that said, well, I haven't had any involvement at all in recreation and haven't used in the programs, but this is what I'd like to see. So we got a little bit of that. Again, it wasn't a scientific survey, but that's something I hope to be.
But now maybe we have a little bit more time.
Yeah, and I hope that is an ongoing process.
Right, exactly. That's the other thing is, we want something that's detailed so we know what it is we want to accomplish in the next year, five years, or whatever it is. But we also know that this is going to be a process that's ongoing in the future. I'll be quiet.
Ongoing, but at some point, we have to hand it off to the city manager to hire our recreation director. Councilmember.
Who would be part of the process?
Councilmember Clay.
So, I'm not going to repeat the things that Terry said.
But you agree with them all?
Mostly.
Especially with the laudatory parts.
Well, in fact, yes. And that's why, I'm sure that's why Bruce asked Terry to go first, because everybody else on the council is much better at being laudatory in their, and I'm just like digging.
I went in the order of the lights.
It's a, it's a, it's a family disease. So let me start by saying that I think we should finish this tonight with the framework, quite frankly. We've been talking about this for a long time. We have at least six council members who've been on the council for four years together and one who's been here the last two. We're about to see a council that's going to have a minimum of three and possibly four new council members. And, you know, it's not fair to dump this on them in this, in this condition. I think it's fair to say that when you're a new council member, it, it takes some time to get up to speed, even if you've been attending meetings because you haven't been privy to all of the, you know, the nitty-gritty detailed pieces of it. So it's my pitch to, to get it done tonight. So I go through the pieces. I think it's, it's nice to have the one-page thing. It's neat, working in the federal government, I've written a lot of one-page documents. However, my experience as a council member over the last six years tells me that where the recreation policy is concerned more and more specificity is better. I've heard a number of times about policies that were adopted by councils passed, which I can't find any written evidence of anywhere, particularly, for example, related to the fee structure about, you know, this is our policy around fees and this is why we do it this way, and until four of you tell us to do it differently, you know, in a regular open process, this is how it's going to be. And so part of this specificity in this is in response to six years of, of that feedback. So for me, the 12-word, however many words it is, 15 maybe, is not going to, is not going to do it. I kind of did what you guys did when we were putting this one, it was, when we were meeting at Terry's house to do this, was think about, well, here's a framework, but then we took all of the material that Josh had created from the interviews that he did with all of the council members and fed it in to support the framework, because the framework grew out of those materials. And I think that to remove that really takes away a lot of the content and the intent of what we're doing. And I think, you know, it might be there as part of the public record, but unlike when Congress meets and they want to know what the original intent of a law is and they go back to the notes, like, I don't, I don't know that that's a policy here, so I think we should include it in the beginning. So in our document, we've kept the name Recreation Department. I would like to keep that.
And that's what they're saying in this one?
They didn't.
We were saying we were flexible. The original intent of changing the name was, to some degree, I thought it was a nice PR move to give people a better sense of the full range of things that the Recreation Department does, which is not just, I think for some people, they think of recreation of just gym stuff, just exercise. And I think the Rec Department does a lot more than that. We kind of said, well, if the Recreation Department can do more promotion, more advertising, let people in the community know what they do more effectively, the name is less, the name change is less important. But I know that that's also a challenge and it's been something, since I've been on the committee for, I don't know how many years now, we've always said, you know, people need to know more about what recreation does. So the name change, we saw it as an opportunity to kind of strengthen things.
Did someone come up with a two-word name?
The two-word name?
Or are we still at Recreation Arts?
Yeah, we had the longer name. We didn't change it, we didn't.
Sorry, that was, that was mean, that was a comment. All right. On with our report.
Yes.
So I think the mission statement, if Terry's okay with it, is fine. What I noted is that some of the parts, like arts and culture, sports, personal development, they got moved to other parts, which is fine. We're missing the improved self-images and interpersonal skills and increased self-sufficiency, but we talk about personal development and I think with an admission, that's, I think that's great. I'm good with that. Good?
Good.
Sorry. Josh just asked me a question, I missed what you're good with.
I'm good with the mission assignment as they've got it, because.
I thought there was something after that.
The pieces that they took out have been put into other parts of the document.
So that they could be more developed specifically at some point, yeah.
And I'm fine with the who we serve. It's very nice. I am also okay with the rewrite of, under how we serve, one and two. And I would note that you said that, you made a comment about how we're interested in employability or job readiness, but maybe not defining out specific programs like becoming, having a whole broad program of resume writing, workshops, and job skills training. So where that comes from, as I understand what people are saying, is that this idea about the integrated service delivery model provides people with job readiness skills. It's because there's some level of on-the-job training. There's, there's training that occurs through the program model. So you don't have, and you might offer, you might offer a class in resume writing, that's something different. I don't know if you'd write it, do it through the Recreation Department or some, you know, the library services or something, but, but actual job training, like, I don't think that we would set those, you know, we do partners and referrals. But if you're doing something around aquatics or around the, you know, the foods and, or running the summer camps, you should be teaching people what good job skills are. And, you know, at that level, it's how to come to work on time, bring your uniform with you, bring your ID card so that you can let people in and out, you know, have your sunscreen and your water bottle, those sorts of things. How do you talk to people? So there, you know, there's a lot of soft skills that are involved in that. And if we do our recreation programs well, we'll be teaching people those skills. And I think that's what we're talking about, if I understand it correctly. So then goal number three is about the pricing. And this is the one where I, I really feel like the specific pieces that we set up need to be stated there.
Okay.
And you have the specific ones in one of these pieces that we have?
Yeah, it's in the.
Like a page seven or?
There should be a price differential and so forth.
Yeah.
Bottom of page one?
The bottom of page one, number three.
So that chart.
There's a chart and then there's the specific commentary that came out of the piece that Josh wrote with, it has a little bit of an amendment to it based on conversations that we've had. But that's essentially, I believe, where that comes from. It's still flexible, it's a general guidance. So this is, you know, this is where, when we have the conversations with Recreation, they'd say, we can't, you know, we were told to make all of the prices really low for people so everybody could afford them. Because we were having the conversation about how, you know, people would say, well, I would, I'd like to have a little better quality programming, I'd be willing to pay more for it, I'd be willing to pay enough to provide the differential for other students who might want to be there as well. So we had people who were willing to pay more for a little better programming. And we hear from the Rec Department that we don't use all the existing scholarship dollars that we have. I talked about where I worked, we essentially set up a certain percentage of the income from each program, which was the equivalent of two full-time slots, but we could split it out any way we wanted to. And it was built into the cost structure of the program and, you know, different ways to, to do that, but clearly a price differential and a guideline for how much that should be based on, you know, the costs. So what we're, what we're asking people to, to pay. And I think that it's, it's clear that it still meets the, what you have there as well as that we want to make scholarships available for Tacoma Park residents who cannot pay full price in, in a relatively liberal fashion.
Can I just, can I work there a second? In terms of process, I want to check on something and see if that would be helpful. With this, with Councilmember Clay bringing up this chart and the, what is it, seven-page document? Nine-page, however long this one is, the nine-page one?
It's actually seven pages because the first two pages are the framework by itself and the next seven pages are the framework with the components from Josh's policy.
Okay, I just want to make sure that anybody who's looking at the documents has the nine-pager and that it's the first page and it's number three at the bottom with the chart. If we, if people are comfortable saying that they want to agree with Councilmember Clay that the, the general statement in the Recreation Committee's, how we serve, number three, can be augmented with this additional piece from this other document, then we have kind of a sense of that and can move on rather than we keep going through all of this stuff. So, Councilmember Schultz.
The only problem I have is I don't know, understand the chart. There's x's there, but I don't know what the x's are supposed to mean.
The table got split, Fred, so if you look at the bottom of the previous page.
I figured that part out. No, I just.
And I had the same difficulty at first, but it looked like where there's an X means that that group would pay for that portion in, in the heading. So that everybody would be paying for program staff, everybody would be paying for materials, transportation, admission fees, and other direct costs. And then where it splits out is the administrative overhead and the fiscal plan overhead as to who would contribute toward that.
Okay, but then we need to help somebody be dumb like me be able to understand what you, to include what you just said at the end of the text as to, this chart says something because it's not self-evident. Now, maybe I just got them, I'm not arguing with the substance of what it says. I just think that we're going to have charts, which I'm all in favor of, just make them so that they are pretty self-evident. That's all.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? Are people comfortable with putting that in? Just for now, I just want to get, you know, kind of pieces if we could.
Am I allowed to ask a question at this point? So, so Colleen, so tell me if this is right. So the idea is to have a cost differential and to have that to be based on how much it costs to deliver the program so that the, a portion of the cost is, is what a Tacoma resident would bear. And if somebody's from out of the, out of the city or out of the county, they pay most or all of the full cost to do in that program in general. So in, in simple, in my stupid, simple English, is that about right? Okay.
I think the thing that's helpful about this chart is it tries to actually think about what are fixed costs and variable costs and also what the, for example, why the county, portions included for the county that's not from outside.
The county is because the county actually does reimburse us for, for some portion of recreation services, so.
Now, if the county reimburses us for more money for the New Hampshire Avenue site, is that lower though, that site costs? No?
No. The county contributed some money to the development of this building where we hold recreation. And so even though they didn't contribute a hundred percent of it, they, we would, they wouldn't have to pay for the, essentially, the, you know, the building cost.
Does someone pay for the cost of the New Hampshire Avenue?
I want to double check for a minute with the city manager on this. She may be able to provide some clarity.
There's kind of two different conversations going with two different facilities. With regard to the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center, that is not a reimbursement. We are being paid as a contractor to operate the facility. Prior to unification, obviously this was, you know, in Prince George's County Park and Planning, which actually operates recreation centers, Montgomery County Park and Planning does not. So that became a Montgomery County recreation function, which had no interest in operating the facility and actually felt the city could do it cheaper. So it's, there's some debate on this and the language becomes very important. It's been part of the argument I've made with the county in terms of tax duplications. I just want to be really clear of what we're doing. It's not a reimbursement, it is not a grant. Essentially, we're being paid to operate the facility so that Montgomery County Rec does not have to do that. That payment has been, had the heck slashed out of it over the last few years. So I think Jay's question about how does this factor into everything is kind of important. I'm going to, I don't know if Greg can nod or not. One of the things that came up as part of that operational payment was that we could not differentiate between what a Montgomery County resident would pay to participate in a program and what a Tacoma Park resident would pay.
At that facility or broadly?
At that facility. And I know that was part of the discussion and Greg, I don't know if we worked that out. One of the comments when we got the, it's a year-to-year contract because obviously the rate has been getting steadily reduced, is one of the things that I had Greg talk to Montgomery County Rec about is that I didn't think it was fair or appropriate to say that there could be no differential when the county unilaterally has been slashing that payment. And I don't know, Greg, did that get worked out in the contract language? Yeah. So that is a kind of a contractual, potential contractual issue with that facility. In terms of this facility, and once you and Jay's correct, County obviously gave us several million dollars for this building, there was really no specific, you can't do this, you can't do that, and we, we have had a differential. So there's really no restriction in terms of this building. I think there might have been, some of you who were around at that time, Terry or the mayor, whether there was any kind of, kind of moral understanding of what we would do. But we've always charged a differential for residents, maybe not to the extent some councilmembers would like. But, so I think you do need to look at where the program is held and there are some differences in there from a structure standpoint.
And I guess I just wanted to make sure that we didn't impose upon the recreation's staff a incredible, difficult formula for every single program of, well, we have to figure out what Rec portion is, what the New Hampshire Avenue is, what this is, how do you do all these things? And maybe that's not so difficult, but being mathematically challenged, that may be a little bit trickier to do for each program. I know when they did the YES Summer League program, we just didn't have the kids applying for the program, so they dropped the cost of that dramatically and we had a very successful YES program this summer. But that was based, I think, on part on the flexibility and the judgment of the recreation staff of saying, well, do we have a program? Do we have, we have no program that we charge the higher fee for, or do we dramatically drop this, lose some money, but we have a program where you get a lot of kids involved? And so I wanted to just make sure that we have that flexibility for the staff to be able to make some of this.
That's exactly why it's worded the way it is, right? That it, that it says that it's guidance and that you may actually, there's other factors you might put in there, right? You might, there's scholarship factors. You might, there's scholarship factors, there's income generation factors, you might have something that's wildly successful.
Right.
And you'd want to charge everybody more than the cost because it could subsidize something else. Or you might have a situation where it makes sense not to have a differential because you need X number of kids to have a successful league, or you want a league that has more diversity and the only way you're going to get that is to have a broader county-wide price.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I just want to make sure that in giving them guidance on this, there is that flexibility, it sounds like that flexibility is there, but I don't want the staff to get caught up in a, "Well, you guys didn't follow all the rules exactly on this." And so, I mean, that's, the detail stuff is, is hard. And I agree with Colleen, you want to be specific enough to give them good guidance on this.
It's, it's not rocket science to figure this out. I could help them figure it out in an afternoon. It's, you know, we could do the physical plant overhead with some numbers and square footage to get a ballpark, you know. You could do the administrative overhead based on the percent allocations of the people up the chain to the recreation department. That's part of the way that the city manager has done the budget over the last couple of years, where you can see where people are allocated to different centers. So you, you know, that's not hard, you can come up with a single overhead and you can apply it to everything, you don't have to do that. And you should know how to split it out based on the capacity of your program because you have so many staff, we have so many existing programs, and we should just be able to split it out. And if, you know, if the programs contract a little bit or they expand a little bit, it's, it's not that big of a deal because it's essentially, it's cost recovery for money that's already spent in the budget, so it's not going to kill us. And I, and I think part of it is being explicit about the loss leader. You know, summer camps for, for cities all across the country, summer camps are income generators.
Yeah.
And they use that income to do all the kinds of programming that we've been talking about how we want to do, but we haven't really done that in the same way here. And, you know, this is what, this allows you to do. And it provides them with some flexibility to make those kinds of decisions with a general guideline about, you know, we want these people to pay at least for these additional costs that we're, we don't want to spend our tax dollars to underwrite the programs for people who don't contribute.
Yeah.
And to the extent that the county does contribute, and they contribute by contributing money to the building or they contribute over in, then that's recognized by this.
Then they get break too. A little.
Yeah. So, is that it for this one?
So are people comfortable with that inclusion of that additional information magnified by the discussion that went on around it?
Yes.
My sense is that everybody says, "Okay, I understand that, that makes sense." Do I get a nod from the city manager on that one? No.
The head's moving, it doesn't look like it's a nod. That's not a nod.
Is there, is there anything you'd like to say?
No, I mean, we're just trying, truthfully, there's just been a lot of ideas bouncing around. I think Greg and I talked earlier this afternoon and I think we're just trying to listen to the discussion and, and to try to sort everything out.
And we're trying to provide as much clarity as possible.
But we also want staff's input on this too, so if there are points you'd like to make, it would be important for us to hear those.
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, given where we're at in the process, I don't think it's feasible, truthfully, for me to begin a, a recruitment for a new recreation director, probably till after the first of the year at the earliest, which is obviously going to leave the department in a period of transition, much longer than I would have hoped. But from a practical standpoint, I need to make sure that whatever comes out of this is, that I have time, and I've talked to the mayor about scheduling time when the new council is seated, that I've got a new council that's on board with whatever has been discussed so that the department can go forward without a climate of turmoil, quite candidly. And it's certainly going to be good for me to have things very settled before I even start a recruitment, because that's just a disaster if you're trying to attract people. What I would envision happening is having the discussion this evening, see where the council ends up, work with Gregory and the rec staff to, you know, kind of sort through everything, put together probably a little bit more meat on the bones, and then ask the mayor to schedule time when the new council is seated to basically kind of go over all that. And that's kind of where I'm at, so I guess I, I don't really feel the need to get too specific. I mean, Gregory, if you have any questions, certainly, you know, feel free to pose some, but just trying to sort through it all and see where we're at.
Okay.
All right, well, I totally disagree with that, but let's move on. Number four, so I think that it's great to be able to do the, the budgeting, the programmatic budgeting. Be nice to be able to see it by program as well as by service area. So if we can do that so that the budgeting is by program and by service area, because you should, you're doing these other things, you should know what your program budget is.
The reason that we didn't, can I sit down?
Yeah.
The reason that we didn't do it that way is based on the experience that we had as a committee for asking for the exact same thing over the past couple of years. And it, it, it wasn't helpful to us to know how much this, it's helpful for the staff and they, I believe they do it already, but it wasn't helpful for us to know how much this particular knitting program costs versus this particular subsidized basketball program. What was useful for us was to, to have a sense of, is most of the money going into the priorities that we, that we would like to see? So that's why we, that's why we didn't do it that way. It, it, it's important to know how much a program costs, but it's not the only factor in deciding if there should be a program. And so we felt that that was more properly, properly the director of the department and that, that the council, that is what we think, that the council would be, would be useful in the, in the area by area. That, that's why we didn't put in there in the, in this version. But if I could back up for just a second to number three.
Okay.
We intended to put in setting fees based, based on a portion of the full costs and residents get the, get the discount. We, we just weren't, again, in the details so much. So I'm not sure there's, there's a huge issue there, but on four, there is a, there is a definite difference in how we see what's most useful for you guys based on what we went through. And we did ask for it, along with data, many times. Over the years.
And, and you've got enough of what you requested to know that you didn't maybe want to know all that?
At this point, I think that, that'd be a fair statement, yeah. I mean, if you'd asked us a year ago, I'm not sure we would have known enough to know that we didn't want it.
And when we first started this, I don't think the data was really, was being collected as well, and I think with ActiveNet and other things, we're getting more data, which are sensitive. I think the systems have gotten better in the last year or two, and I think before that, we were unclear.
So, yeah, so again, it's not a question of figuring it out, it's a question of at what level do the different people involved want to get into it? And the director versus the committee versus the council, that, that's how I see it.
And I'm, I'm just agree with you, because I think council should be able to know what a program cost is. Where this really became an issue was in the Extreme Horizons program where the Recreation Department was taking a group of middle school to early high school kids out every day on some kind of an adventure. And I think our cost for the program was similar to what the county's cost was, which was around a hundred and eighty dollars. And the Recreation Department reported that the program paid for itself, but the daily fee for each kid was in, you know, the twenty to forty dollar range depending on what they were doing. And then you've got the bus, you've got, you know, staff to pupil ratios, you've got a trip to an amusement park every week, and you've got, out of kind of fifteen to twenty different kids, a core of eleven of those kids going through the same program week after week. So you've got an individual program there where the cost is really high. You know, I would, maybe it costs four or five hundred dollars a week to do that kind of programming where you, you have a separate bus driver, your bus driver isn't one of your staff members. You've got bus costs and, you know, all the other allocated costs, you've got a really expensive program. And I think that it is incumbent upon the council to be able to understand what those kinds of program costs are and get those kinds of answers. And so I feel like if it's not something that we talk about in our recreation policy when the next council comes along and there's a program like that and they want to ask questions about it, you know, there's not a recreation policy in place that says that the Recreation Department is required to provide that kind of programmatic information. And so you won't get it back when you ask for it.
That's interesting. I didn't, I didn't, didn't see that.
So I'm not suggesting that we have the programmatic information and that the council sit, the next council, sit at the dais and review every program and decide whether or not it's worth it or not. But if you don't get it into the policy, my feeling is if it doesn't go into the policy document now, when we ask court later, we're going to have to go through this whole process again, or the next council will have to go through this entire process again. And, you know, all of this processing and all of this so that we can ask for, you know, what the programmatic cost is for a program. And I personally think as someone who has worked and managed recreation programs, that you should just, you should know what the cost of your program is. Because if you don't know what the cost of your program is, you can't look at the opportunity cost for what you're giving up to provide that program. So if you ask me, if I had five hundred dollars a week to spend on a teenager, would I spend it taking them on a different adventure, including an amusement park every week for seven weeks? That might not be how I spend my money. But if I can't talk about the programs, you know, in that sense, I, then what can I talk about? I've, I've given up the transparency of the process to these broader categories of youth and, and seniors and adults, which isn't, which isn't to say that I think that, you know, it's not also useful to have that information because we should be able to tell how we're providing things. And it's definitely the case that, you know, your recreation director and your recreation staff should be able to make some decisions about, you know, how they're going to do intervention activities and how they're going to fund them. But you can't, you, you have to have transparency for people to be able to see that. And that's why I think is key to have the information based on the program.
I disagree with that.
So the way, I don't know which, which version you want to look at, but the one that we have is written as, is, this is what the department does, one, two, three, four, five. So this is written that the department develops this program, these costs based by service area for the council. So you're saying they should develop, and I'm not sure there's any disagreement, that they should develop for their, for program as well as service area costs, and then if the council asks for that additional information, it's there, is that what you're saying?
Sure, so it could just say, "Cost and results by program area and service area."
And then the council can ask for what is useful?
So.
So I have questions about, I don't know enough, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to make sure that what we're talking about is adding in, it seems like the word program to the first line of number four, budgeting of costs and results by program and service area.
And then it could just become, and then so the council can determine, yeah. But we could, and I don't know enough about the way the city departments are structured overall, to know if either three or four is breaking some kind of wide-setting city management policy or if these are.
Well, I was, I was going to, what I was going to see was if that seemed reasonable to the council.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
And then see if there's kind of some issue or difficulty that staff needs to bring to our attention on that one. So first I'll go to Councilmember Wright.
So this is a like subtle distinction, but I think it's pretty critical. It says here for the council so that council can determine. That's not what this is about.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It's not for the council to sit up here and try and micromanage the programs. That's not what Colleen's talking about, that's not what I'm talking about. It is about so that results by service area and programs can judge, so that we can judge whether those programs and goals are, are managed properly, right? So then, so it can be determined if service goals are met. It's not about the council, right? It's about a tool by which the staff and the committee and the council together figure out, are we meeting the goals we, we want? And.
Works for me.
One of the things we asked at the very beginning of the document I put together was, are we going to spend more money, less money, the same? And generally people said, "We want to try and spend the same amount of money unless some significant case can be made for spending more." We are not going to be able to do that and achieve the goals that we're going to have here if we don't figure out what is the biggest bang for the buck. And the only way you're going to do that is to say, "Okay, what's this program at the program level?" Probably nice to have it at this, rolled up to the service level also, achieving in terms of that goal. So you could look at the program and say, "Hey, what's the ward makeup of this program and what's the age makeup of the, this program?", which then drives to say, "Are we actually investing the dollars that achieve that goal?"
So if you just strike, just strike council from all that and just, so, so it can be determined if service goals are met.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So that gives you the transparency of anybody looking at it should be able to tell. Makes sense.
So for example, when we originally designed the basketball program and we, and we, we, the committee made a list of all the things that would cost to do it, and including the t-shirts and the refs and the rentals and the on and on and on, and then we, you know, and then, but how, now, how would that, how did that get played out? How, how, through fees, how expensive would it be? Could people afford to play? And then at the end, did we get what we wanted? Did we get the result? Well, in that particular case, for the most part, we did. But that, but that's the kind of thing you mean.
But you're looking for the transparency of the overall cost.
Exactly.
And if, if the costs are high to a small number of people, an explanation that makes sense of say, "Well, we did this at a low cost because we were hitting all low-income kids and so our scholarship levels were much higher." That's what you're looking for.
Right, and I think, and that should tie back to the desired outcomes, which we're, I don't think we should actually tonight try and decide, and I think the newly hired recreation managers should be engaged, but whatever that item is, if it's, you know, maybe youth development's not phrased correctly, but there should be some measurable goal that the recreation department comes back and says, "Hey, for youth development, this is what we're going to, going to measure." You know, and in the thing I put together, I suggested, you know, one of the goals, it doesn't necessarily have to be one of the goals, but youth employment, the sense of youth who have a part-time or full-time job, right? And then you'd be able to tie back, we're spending this much money on somebody that's trying to address that and know the opportunity cost of that versus some other program.
Yeah, this, this is something we've talked about in the committee a bit because the county has it, performance based by service area for, for their recreation programs. They have outcomes, will serve these, this many of these kinds of people, and then they go back and, and see if they do, you know. We've, we've talked about doing that too. But as you said, we felt that, that needs to, to be done with the new record director over some time and with the council at the end saying, "Yeah, this is what we want."
Right, but we can't have that.
That's why we didn't try to take your perspective here.
Unless council and recreation director and committee won't be able to have that discussion unless it's, we think about having the performance-based budgeting at programmatic and service area level. Put that in there.
Yeah. Yeah.
So at the moment, we have number four as developed performance-based budgeting of costs and results by program and service area, so it can be determined if service goals are met. And the parentheses.
Does that?
Am I getting nods everywhere? Yes?
Yes.
Any, any comments from city manager or staff on that one? Yes, I'm seeing a thumbs up? Okay. Good. Continue, please.
So, five, great add, thank you.
Great add.
For adding number five, yes.
Okay.
And then I've talked enough, so I'm going to, my closing comment is going to be that you have six outcomes slash what we provide.
Well, yeah, and it could be five, it could be seven, it could be eight.
Okay. I just want to say that I would like to see them broken out in participant outcomes and community outcomes.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think that they're different things that we're, that we're looking at, and it'd be nice to be a little more specific, I think.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
That's, yeah, so I, you know, I think that, that's a, and it's a good way to be, you can measure those things in different ways, like you can survey your participants, but community outcomes, you can, you track in different kinds of ways, and so I think it's good to kind of think of them in that way.
Great.
And pass it on to somebody else.
Okay. Councilmember Wright.
So I want to first say I think we're very close, just to be, I know it's nine thirty already, but I'm very optimistic and I think this has come about by us having a healthy debate here over a number of. here over a number of evenings. I know at times some residents have sort of said, well, what's, I look at Wayne, because it's sort of like, oh, this happened, and this discussion, and so I think it's a healthy discussion and people actually listening to each other. I'm committed to getting this done tonight, because we only voted on, I only voted on extending the, delaying the hiring if we actually had something done by November 9th, and I think the honorable and right thing to do is to get this done. And I think we're close. And I have to say, I don't, I don't think we can pass this on to the next council, so I think we need to give you, city manager, something that you feel comfortable with, and that we have to come to an agreement about this. And it's just like what was done with the rent control issue, right? The council debated it for a long time. There was a lot that went into it. A decision was made, and when I got on the council, I sort of wanted to reopen it, but that wasn't, that policy thing was done.
Yeah.
And so it's got to be done for a while, and the next council has a lot of other issues they can deal with, and they can, they can manage the rec programs within the framework, the policy framework that's come up with. I really like, I think we should leave the name, I like the mission statement, I like who we serve. And my view is that this is, there should really be some cascading level of detail. So there should be one page that someone should get, and then behind it should be some of the more, some of the greater detail that was in previous documents. So because I think you could say, well, what does the integrated service delivery model mean? Right? People are like, what the hell's that, three years from now? Well, if you actually go and look at the, flip three pages back, there'd be a nice diagram with illustrative examples, which would be really helpful. So I think I'm echoing Colleen's comments. In the first item, "How we serve," I think there should be, recreation staff will work in collaboration with a wide range of partners to fully utilize local assets and create integrated goals for programming, service use, and use of facilities. I think we need to work volunteers into there more specifically.
Sure.
Maybe it's, comma, including use of, you know, community members and volunteers.
After partners?
Could be, yeah.
Do you mean in the partners part, or in the goals for public services and facilities part?
Sorry, in how we serve, number one, in how we serve.
Yeah, I mean, the first half of the sentence or the second half?
It could go either place. I wouldn't, I'd leave the wordsmith thing up to you, to someone else, but I just think it should be...
Sure.
Okay.
Have volunteers.
Yeah.
With a wide range of partners, you know, it could say right after that, including community members and volunteers. I think in number three, you know, this is an area we talked a bunch about already, but another point which is in detail, I don't know that it needs to be here, but you might think about it, is just that we really don't want the means-tested aspect of who cannot pay the full price. This has been something, I think, a policy issue that's gone back and forth with the staff around, well, we'll give a scholarship, but what's the process to get that? And it really should be something relatively simple, you know, on the honor system kind of model, as opposed to trying to figure out a way to spend the resources to means-test whether people are...
Well, and we always, we kind of jump back to the model of the soccer league and the baseball leagues, and people say, I can't pay the full price. It's like, what can you pay?
Right.
And that's how it's worked within two of the larger programs in the community that are not run by recreation.
So it's just an example, I think either you have it here, or you have it in more detail, so it's very clear about the means-testing. And then I think that the desired outcomes one is a little bit tougher. I'm not sure we're going to solve that fully tonight, but I do think the participant versus commitment outcome is smart, and maybe we have kind of, our draft and this along with the specific goals is something that the next recreation manager comes back to us with and says, yes, I affirmed, you know, five of these and wanted to add two more. I think like, we shouldn't do one of the ones you suggested, and here's why, kind of discussion. And then lastly, in this proposed action, in your second bullet point, I'm okay with this, as long as it includes concrete measurements.
Well, and that was, that was the intent.
So that these goals have real numbers that we could look at.
Yeah, yeah, that was...
While you're thinking about that one, let me go for a second, go back to number three and see if the city manager has any comment about not means-tested.
I'm going to look to Greg. Well, no, he and I talked about it.
I felt a little vibration in the room, and I wanted to...
This is about the honor system, Greg, Chris, Scott.
Why are you guys sitting so far back? Come down to the front row, so we can...
I'm going to share, see it, wouldn't I?
Who's back there, anyway?
You're moving too far.
I just wanted, I just figured it was a good time to get in any comments on this, if it was deemed necessary. Anybody want to talk about scholarships and means-testing versus not means-testing, or how that's working, or, I don't want to take this train off the tracks, but I want to see if there's anything that needs to be said.
Greg.
Greg Lee, did you have anything?
Greg, it might be helpful to explain what we deem here and what your experiences with other rec departments.
Well, currently, it's not on...
She'll turn it on.
Well, currently, I'll give the example in our rental basketball league, we, some sort of means-tested systems, really not means-tested, if participants receive free or reduced lunch through the school system, they automatically get a reduced rate for participation in the league. That's the only thing that we ask them to show, is that they get free or reduced lunch through the Montgomery County Public School System. No one outside of Tacoma Park for any of our programs receives fee scholarships. That's the way that our program is currently. For a program as large as our after-school program, which is a before and after-school program, which is a revenue-generating program, currently, it is a means-tested system where we award scholarships on a percentage based on the person's income. That program is very large, it's a large number of staff, a lot of resources, city resources that we put into that program. And it's a popular program, it's one that fills up, that we could, if we could, find some way of expanding it, expanding it eventually. So the participation is really good in that program. By offering a, or altering the scholarship system to where, you know, folks that want to participate can just name their price, or it would be difficult to set a price, a scholarship price, for a program such as that. Right now, the program is over for a 10-month period, it's roughly $200 and some dollars a month for that particular program. We don't pay monthly, we pay quarterly, or for the entire year, or half the year, so we have three types of payments for that. 60% scholarships, 40% scholarships, and 20% scholarships, based on their income. If we decided to drop that system and allow residents, you know, that they just came and said that they wanted to exercise that option, it would be difficult to really staff the program and do some of the things that we wanted to do because of the revenue laws that we were receiving in that particular program. So that, that's why my hesitation on a program such as that versus on some of the smaller programs, like the, you know, typical, you know, arts program, or indoor soccer program, or some of the programs that are smaller costs. The larger programs are revenue-generating, and we would receive a dramatic reduction in our department's revenues, I can foresee if we went that route.
So I think just the intention, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, is again to have guidance, right? So that's the general desire, but that the staff would have some flexibility depending on the program, if there's some justification for doing something different. You know, I'd be curious to sort of understand how that goes, or people have to bring in their income, if you feel like that's an issue, or is, you know, providing the free and reduced lunch card a simple process? But I think, again, it's, it's an attempt to say, our general policy desire is to not have means-tested, if possible, but if there's situations where, again, because there's a big revenue issue, or where there might be a reason why you wanted to do the program in some other way, that the staff, again, would have flexibility to meet the ultimate goal of delivering on the program and trying to achieve the outcome goals we want. I don't know if Colleen or Carrie had additional comments on that.
My additional comment is that I don't think it's that hard to ask people for their free and reduced lunch certification, but I understand why you feel differently, and I'm willing to have the conversation.
I would say, just a couple things. One, I agree that the free and reduced lunch as a means-test is much different than asking for an income tax statement and/or pay stubs. I think that we should ask for the latter, the specific income in very limited cases. I can understand what you're saying with the after-school care because of the number of participants that you're talking about. But I think it's, I think there's an underlying assumption that maybe taking this, that people would severely abuse the program if we had, if we used just an honor system of people saying that they need the assistance or the scholarship. And I don't think that's been the experience that we had previously in the city with the Recreation Department, and I think other organizations haven't found it to be a real problem. Yes, maybe some people do abuse the system, but I think there's also many people who don't ask for it just because they're embarrassed to say that they need it. And so they don't participate in the programs, and we would like them to participate, so. I can see that flexibility would be needed, but I think there should be an underlying philosophy, which is, we want people to participate. And with the basketball program, the free and reduced lunches works fine for school-age kids, but we have in the past had basketball programs that served the older people who are out of school, and so that test doesn't work. But I think there's great benefit to the community by having a midnight basketball program, or some of those other programs that we've had in the past, and not being so worried about people proving that they need a scholarship, or a reduced fee.
So it sounds like there's an understanding that there's a desire to go with kind of no-means-tested if there aren't other reasons to go with the various options that you've outlined for specific programs, that there are good reasons to do those, but that just as a, as a kind of overall philosophy, that if there aren't those reasons to go that way, that that would be the approach. And so I think with that flexibility, that's a reasonable understanding. Councilmember Schultz?
Aren't we sort of just saying that the way it's being done now works, and we're trying to figure out a way to make a policy so that the policy ends up allowing you to do what you're doing?
Yes, I think that's the goal. And from what I'm hearing you all say, is that free and reduced lunch, using that method is okay, we're applicable. And if we need to use a means-tested system like the before and after-care program, we can use it if it's justifiable. But if, at the same time, if someone comes and needs a scholarship for some of those lesser programs, that we give the scholarship on the honor system. That's what I'm hearing from the council.
Now, one of the things I just wanted to share with the council, the conversation Gregory and I had, and I had asked him the question, I believe it was, last week, if he felt that there was more the department could do to advertise the fact that we offer scholarships. And one of the things he said is that right now, we sort of put a notice that's a little bit obscure in the brochure, and then I asked Greg if there was an opportunity perhaps to partner more with the schools and some of the teachers who may know of kids that are in need. Obviously, they can't just be giving us names, but at least maybe we could work through the school system a little bit more for them to make the parents aware that we do offer scholarships, and perhaps, you know, work with the schools to get that information out a little bit more than we do currently.
Sounds like a good approach.
I think the underlying goal is to get, you know, participants, and not having money being the obstacle for people participating in the programs.
Right.
And I think a great deal of it is that, you know, people kind of respond to the way that they're treated. And if we treat them like they're going to cheat on the program, they probably try to figure out a way they can do it. If we treat them like they're honorable and respectable people, then they'll tend to be honorable and respected.
Okay, I just thought we ought to get clarity on that one, and I think we've got a lot more clarity than we had. So, sorry, I interrupted somebody.
Josh was on...
Yes, that's right, you were looking for your other one.
The only thing, I think the other comment was just that we articulate utilizing local assets, but I don't think we do a great job in the long-form document of specifying what we mean by that. There's illustrative examples in the integrated service model, but I'm not sure that we have a, you know, we should probably have a paragraph or two on that idea of really doing a deep understanding what our assets are and using them in program development.
Councilmember Schultz?
I don't have too many things, just real quick. I intend to agree with Councilmember Wright and Councilmember Clay that we are this close. And I do think if we can get this thing wrapped up, we will be doing a service to Recreation Department and to the city manager's ability to start the process sooner than later, realizing that it isn't practical to start the recruitment process until after the holidays, no matter what we do. So if we can, I'd like to go in that direction as well, which is to say, to get this thing adopted, or adopt as much of it as we can with this council. It may be that the desired outcomes, like Councilmember Wright was saying, whether there's five of them, six of them, or there are different, you know, different wording, can be something that we can leave undone for the future and sort of patch up that part of it after, after the new director gets hired. Specifically, in "How we serve," it references in number one, a wide range of partners. I'd like more specificity to that. It's been mentioned volunteers as being a wide range of partners, but that's what the Recreation Committee is composed of already, they're all volunteers. And I'm not sure what a non-recreation committee volunteer looks like, because if we're going to have volunteers, they've got to be organized in some sort of fashion. It could be parents, because we have, for a lot of people with kids who actively participate season after season in different programs, I think the parents would be a very powerful source of influence. But I just think the who, rather than just saying a wide range of partners, it would be helpful to be a little more defined there. The question of measurables has been already mentioned, so I won't belabor it too much, but it seems to me that any recreation department of... but it seems to me that any recreation department of some size, just in the profession, has probably got some, the profession probably has some fairly well-developed idea of what measurables are. And I think if we're going to create desired outcomes, then there needs to be measurables connected to them, or else what's the point? If we can't measure something, and I don't know what those measurables are, that's your job, or maybe the committee's job, to kind of figure that out, because you've got the time to do it, and we don't. But unless we have those tied to each of the desired outcomes, I think we're going to lose our way. I do agree that with Councilmember Clay's point of that being able to understand the cost of actual programs is vital. It's really something like a business, it really comes down to a business model, because this department, of all the departments in the city, is fairly unique in the sense of in how it, in what it does. It is really interacting with a customer base, a client base, a very large one, a little bit like a service business does. And any business that's going to be successful has to be able to measure all of its component parts. It's like running a restaurant. You've got to not only know what your menu prices are and what the market will bear, but you've got to be able to get down into the weeds and know how much every little component of what you do costs. Council doesn't need to know all of that. Obviously, we don't want to know all that detail. It's really not very interesting and helpful, but you guys do know. And I think that being able to do that allows you to sort of say, you know, this program is, well, I will be repeating what Councilmember Clay just said, so I won't say it, just stop right there. Another comment has to do with, Jay, what you were saying earlier on about your perception that the recreation department needs to do a better job of outreach. And I was wondering about that, because, you know, the recreation department puts out this program guide, was it four times a year it comes out?
Three.
Three times a year. It goes to every address at Tacoma Park. And I think about all the other means of promotion, or getting out information about the program, whether it could be on the city's website or its new website. The city's newsletter includes an awful lot of that stuff. I frankly have, can't even think offhand of anything else more that could practically be done, this side of having vans with loudspeakers on the top, driving up and down the streets, shouting out the news, or, you know, something as crazy as, you know, getting into the question of absurd. I mean, obviously, our cable television channel, you use that as well. So if there's other things that could be done, I'd be curious to know what they are. I think, in fact, I would say that the rec department probably does about as good a job in that realm as reasonable for a city this size, where we don't have our own newspaper. We have The Voice, comes out monthly, and The Gazette, which comes out weekly, but that's not going to be a source of information, and not everybody in the city is honored to receive The Gazette on a weekly basis at their doorstep. I think that's all I really wanted to say at this point. I think we're, this has been a terrifically valuable discussion. And I think we've moved the ball a good distance here, and I'd like to see us, see if we can't bring this thing to a conclusion, if not tonight, somewhere.
I have a plan for that, but Councilmember Wright has another comment.
So Fred, your comments there at the end about publicity and how you attract, really, I think of as customers, reminds me of a comment that Deborah made during one of our discussions about this, which actually was incredibly maddening to me.
What was that?
Because she basically said, this was a big discussion about the diversity of participation by ward. And she basically said, well, you can put programs out there, but you can kind of only do so much to get people to sign up. And if, you know, if you were in a business, that wouldn't work, you'd be out of business. I had the same conversation with banks recently, right? There's 8% of Americans who don't have bank accounts. And, you know, this CEO of a bank was saying, well, I have the accounts, people just don't come in. Well, you're not doing something right. And so I don't know exactly what they are, but there are more ways we can reach out to people. And I think back to when I ran a youth program in New Haven, Connecticut, we actually used to go door-to-door, walk around with kids, and sign them up. But the key thing was then you would recruit a kid to help you. So like, all right, you go get your friends and meet me at the community center in X amount of time. We're thinking about how we, kids are on cellphones, you know, texting more than they talk, right? So there are ways, and for us to say like, well, we put it in the newspaper, we have our three times-a-year annual thing, and that's enough. If people don't come in, they don't come in, is, to me, a little bit sort of saying like, well, we just put it out there, the customer buys it or it doesn't. But in this case, we're not a business, so we don't go out of business because the customer doesn't buy. So we have to really say, what is it? We have to continuously innovate and push to get particularly the broad range of people who live in our community to come in. There's going to be different ways to do that. Sometimes it's going to be viral, sometimes it's going to be through peer pressure, sometimes it's going to be through technology. And we have to do that, because that's the customer base we're trying to attract.
I think you make a persuasive case. Thanks.
Councilmember Stevens.
I would just like to add on to what Councilmember Wright was just saying, and if I'm trying to sell widgets and nobody's buying widgets, I can go door-to-door, I can drag people into my shop, but if they're still not buying widgets, maybe the widget's the problem. And so I think we need to have, you know, kids participating, or the potential, the client base we're trying to attract, participating in what it is they're looking for programs. They know what kind of widget they want to buy, so let's talk to them and find out.
Yeah, I was going to say widgets have never been the problem. Widgets have been around for a long time. What I would propose is that we, it sounds like we have pretty broad agreement on some modifications to this document that was provided by the recreation committee. I have a number of notes of changes and additions. It's possible, I'm sure that I missed at least one or two, but you all have some notes, the city manager has notes. And my sense is that we can pull this together very quickly with the changes and circulate it to the council in the next day or two, Wednesday, Thursday, and so that it can go back in the packet for kind of final blessing next week. I'm not anticipating a whole lot of discussion. I would say that if there's anything that was missed, please do it via email so that we know we've got the piece, and we're just doing the formal, I'm not going to say blessing, but.
I volunteer to help make it look pretty.
I'll do that with you.
We're happy to give our notes.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were saying. I thought you were proposing that the rec committee would be doing this, is the council is going to do it, or?
I was, I was trying to make some one person or entity responsible. I was trying not to make it a cluster.
You want to finish that thought?
No.
I think we're better off to have the council involved as well, so we don't have more of this back and forth between the two groups, a little bit of back and forth going on.
Do you want to have one or not?
No, I want to, I want to finish it, so if that means all of us, or three or two, or?
I think there's a couple of points. One is that next week is a great week, but we do have some other time. I mean, we're talking about getting this in the packet by Thursday, which means, you know.
By Friday.
Or Friday, which comes with a squeak from the staff. But that we, you know, that only lives, leaves a couple of days. If we actually postpone it to the optional council meeting we have, that gives a couple of weeks to get it done, so that we, I mean, this is important to the, to our business. I think it's important that we take the time and do it right, and not just rush, because, you know, we've got to get a packet out by Friday.
I was thinking it was going to be fairly simple, because we've had an hour and a half discussion, and I think we've got the agreement, we've got the input. I don't think it's going to be that hard. Why don't we try for, getting it together for the Friday packet? And it's.
And when you say you want someone to take the lead, do you have a council person to take the lead, or one to take the lead with everybody?
I was, I was going to propose that maybe the recreation committee chair and I could try and pull this together pretty quickly. We can do that. And we can get it, I would pledge to get it back out to my colleagues by sometime on Wednesday, and give people an opportunity to weigh in with anything. And if, and if for some reason it just goes beyond, then it's not ready for next week, that's all.
I think that's perfect, because the election's coming up, and you'll do it right, or you'll be told you did it wrong.
That's always the case. So is there agreement on that?
Yes.
And we'll try and put it on the agenda for next week as a, yes, this is it, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Good.
That will validate.
Yes. Thank you. So.
Depends on when it comes back.
My pen isn't writing here. Got it. Little grease spot or something. Must have been some leftover peanut dust.
Works all the time.
Okay.
Hard.
Hyatt Pen usually works, too. We have one item remaining on the agenda, and that's city committees, and I think we can make fairly short order of this. The clerk has provided us with a nice list, and I think it's going to be fairly simple to do. And in fact, if you want me to try and make it go quickly, I'll run through it and give you the quick order, and then people can pick something that they disagree with, and we'll go there if we need to.
Let me get to that page.
And you all don't need to stay for that.
But just after our discussion, you're not going to get rid of the recreation committee?
That's not part of the.
We're a little worried a little bit, seeing that afterwards.
You never know.
You never know.
We'll see what the packet says.
Thank you. Was your solution later just to abolish all committees?
No, no, no. If we, and thank you for everybody who contributed to that, who can now go home and still have a tiny bit of evening left. The agenda packet item lists a number of things. I went through and made notes, and so why don't I just go through and say what I've got, and if people like it, we'll be finished, and if not, we'll have the discussion. The first item in bold, council review of applicants for appointment, basically, we indicated we wanted to continue the process as described. And I say, yes, we did. We decided that, we're good with it. Establishing or requiring that an applicant attend a meeting, we said we wanted support for continuing the current system where we recommend that they go, and the application form is being revised to encourage them to do so.
But not required.
I think it should be required, that the applicant, I think it should be required that an applicant attend at least one meeting before they have received their appointment. It just seems incredibly reasonable to me. Why wouldn't somebody want to attend a meeting of a committee that they want to join? If they haven't, then you have to wonder about why, why they want to join the committee, because it suggests they don't understand what it's about.
Councilmember Clay.
I'm okay with that, except for committees that hardly ever meet, so like, what do you do about, like, the noise?
Well, or for the ethics committee that meets once a year, or the personnel appeals board that meets once a year to just kind of check in because we don't use them.
So if you have.
So if it's a monthly meeting, they should attend one.
I mean, things like the cult, I don't see that so much, because that has sort of some judicial responsibilities. But the recreation committee, the emergency preparedness, the Adventist Hospital Land Use Committee, and those, that's a genre of committees, I'm not sure exactly what they all are, but.
Okay. Well, are we going to then divide up all the committees and put them into categories, or so that we know for each committee whether somebody's required? Is that what you're suggesting, Fred?
Sure, because I think it's hard to lump all these committees into.
I guess I'm from, I come from a place where the kind of common sense part, it makes sense in most cases for people to attend, but I don't feel like requiring it. I'm not open. I mean, I, if that's what, I'm not going to try to sink the ship, but I don't see a requirement as necessary.
Councilmember Stevens.
I agree, it's highly desirable in many cases. I'd like to just look at it from the perspective of what's the problem we're trying to solve. And the downside of somebody getting appointed to a committee and then finding out they really didn't like it, is they may either drop out or ask to be dropped from the committee. And I think that we have put in some changes, so we are able to remove people from the committees when they don't participate. So I don't see a real downside, and so I, although I see the desirability of people attending beforehand, we can encourage them, but I wouldn't require it.
Okay. So maybe a thumbs up, thumbs down, make it, how many want to do as provided in the memo and indicate that we advise them to do it?
I just have one suggestion, is actually ask them a question on the application that says, have you attended the meeting? They don't have to, but just the fact that they'll have to check yes or no.
That's on there already.
Oh, it's on there? Okay.
Yeah, but almost, I can only think of one occasion, that somebody said yes, so that I sort of said, well, why do we even bother to have it on there?
I think a lot of times people say yes, before they get appointed.
All right. I'm going to lose the vote anyway.
Yeah, yeah. I think you already lost it.
And that's how it got on the council.
Assignment of council liaisons, we didn't want to go there. There's a lot of heat and noise about that, but none of us thought that was a good idea.
Right.
Councilmember Wright.
So I agree that it's not, I think we should not have council liaisons. The thought I had, just as I was looking at this again, because I think it connects to councils are most effective when we give them clear direction, whether we want to have council members take the lead on articulating the direction for the council, for the rest of the council to sign off of, because I think one of the problems is we come into the meeting, they give us a report, nobody's actually thought in depth enough about, or rarely do we think in depth enough about, hey, well, what do we actually want this committee to be focused on? So they would just put responsibility on a particular council member, you could divide the committees up, to really take ownership over giving direction and getting the rest of the council members to agree to that direction. I think would be very useful, because I think one of the challenges is that we don't give them clear direction, and then we are a little bit unhappy when they flounder.
I would have seconded that idea, because a little while ago, Councilmember Stevens was praising the recreation committee for being so responsive, and I think that's a perfect illustration, is that this council, a few, couple months ago, gave the recreation committee specific marching orders as to what we, the council, really needed for them to do, and what did they do but really respond with quality work in a very short period of time? And I think that illustrates what our committees are really capable of, and when we do. And when, when we don't do what Councilmember Wright is suggesting, they're left to their own devices and, you know, they want to do something and they come to it with different motivations and different ideals. But a lot of times, it just creates a frustrating situation.
Councilmember Clay.
So my concern about council liaisons is that I think that the, the policy work has to be done by the whole council, and you can't really delegate it to an individual. I'm concerned about council members going to committee meetings, because I'm concerned about individual council members influencing what occurs in the committee vis a vis other appointed representatives. I am concerned about how expanding the role of council members will make it more difficult for people to serve on the council and make it more difficult to actually get more diversity of folks involved in the council. When I called around to, to folks to ask if they might be interested in running for council, the number one thing that people said to me was that they couldn't afford to give 20 hours a week to the council. They could afford to give 10. And there were several people, more people of color, women with children, single folks who could give 10 hours but couldn't give 20. And, and so I think that's, that's, that's what, part of what I'm concerned about related to the council liaisons. I'm totally on board with the idea that we need to, if we have these committees, they need to be doing something that we want them to do. And sometimes I, I feel like, you know, we have this deal now where the chief has the chief's advisory committee. And these are council advisory committees, but I, I don't, I don't feel that connected to what the folks are doing, and I don't feel like they're pursuing policy initiatives that I'm particularly interested in. But it doesn't mean that they aren't doing some work that is of value and really is more relational to the staff and could provide more staff support, maybe necessarily than council support. And maybe that's part of the disconnect. I mean, I would look to have fewer committees, to have committees have short-term duration of work. And if they have an ongoing program, to me, they're supporting the staff, because the staff are the people who do the work. I like the six-month committee where they do six months and they're done. But beyond that, I think, you know, maybe what they're really doing is supporting the staff. So those are my concerns.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what Colleen, what Councilmember Clay just said. If the Compensation Committee comes back and suggested a doubling of our salaries, even though I won't be on here, then I think it's a valid thing to put council people to work more. And I'm, I also like the idea of short-term focused committees. I don't know that we had a liaison to the Rec Committee, although I agree that we gave them good guidance and they responded very well. I kind of started the Tacoma Junction Task Force just before I came on the council. And what I, then I, I backed away from it so that it could have some sense of autonomy. And then I real, or I, I recognized, or I noticed that once we got it going officially as a, as a council committee, others on the council wanted there to be, wanted, wanted to make sure that it wasn't just a Ward Three committee. And so since we're Ward, since we serve on a Ward basis, that's another fear I have, an additional fear. So I'm not, I'm not for having a defined council liaison, but I do think that giving committees guidance is a very good idea. And I guess a council liaison, it's a different discussion if, if people had the ability to work on the council and not worry so much about how much time it took.
I see two more lights, but let me just make sure that I understood Councilmember Wright's suggestion correctly, because I sense we're getting off onto some other things other than the question that we thought we were trying to answer here. And what I heard was that it would be a good idea for some council member to be sure to take the lead in providing direction to the committees when they come in and give a report, that we, that somebody who has put some thought into it, and maybe that there needs to be a little bit of thinking by the council ahead of time as to making sure that somebody will be able to articulate some direction to the committee so that they do more than just come in and give the report, and we say, thanks very much, continue. Was I incorrect in hearing that?
Yeah, I think the thing I would just clarify is that that's not for all of the things listed here, right? So I divide, if you look at these council, these committees, commissions, boards, there's advisory committees, and then there's a bunch of committees that are actually involved in the government process, right? So the Board Elections, COLTA, Ethics Commission, Facade Advisory Board, Noise Control, Nuclear Free.
They have their direction.
They have their direction. The person, and really what you're talking about is, I think it's four, and maybe if you include these task force things, or things that aren't ongoing. So it's Arts and Humanities, Emergency Preparedness, Recreation and Safe Roadways, if it continues to exist, are really the standing committees in the charter where, assuming we abolish the Free Burma Committee, where they would come in and report on their activities and we would give them some direction. And all I'm saying is that one council member shouldn't do all of those. We should assign a council member to each one, and that person should be, take a little time to talk to their fellow council colleagues and reach some agreement around what the direction is we want to give them in advance, instead of them coming in, talking to us, and us saying, thank you very much, and then they go away for another year with no, absolutely no direction. That's all, that's all I'm saying. We could alternatively assign the city staff to say, hey, we don't want just a budget packet item that's, I mean, a work session packet item that says, receive the report from the committee. We could ask the city staff to make recommendations around what direction we would give them. My sense is the city staff might not be too happy about that, because they have a lot to do already. So my suggestion was that the council just take a more active role in setting the direction, but not a council liaison.
But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a, a permanent person assigned to monitor that committee.
Right. And I totally agree with all of the comments that everyone's made about a council liaison. And I wouldn't think of it as something that should be a big lift, right? It's something where the person actually reads the report in advance, has a few conversations with fellow council members.
Just like we all do.
And puts, reads the report in advance in depth and puts together like a one-page of what we want them to do in the next year.
Assuming we get it in advance. Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you. I think we've opened this discussion up to two topics. First of all, I agree with the way this is written in the handout tonight, that we do not want a council liaison for each of the committees. As far as the new item that was put on the table by Councilmember Wright, I am, I would just say I'm very supportive of the council giving clear direction to each of the committees. If council members want to do that and provide specific input on any given committee, I think that's laudable, but I don't see us formalizing that as a, as a process.
And what I take from this discussion is that there might be a slight adjustment to approaching reports to committees in, in the next council in terms of how we prepare for those reports and how we track who's coming in. Councilmember Robinson.
It just occurs to me that Councilmember Snipper is not here, so maybe we should assign him to be liaison to all the committees.
And he will provide metrics for all the committees.
And metrics, too.
Councilmember Wright, did you have anything else? Okay. So it sounds like we're saying we agree that we do not support the liaisons and that there can be some further refinement in how the council provides direction to the committees, and that part of that can be how we get information in advance from their report and think about what direction we want to give. Deletion of the Free Burma Committee, we all agreed that we can delete it from the city code. My suggestion for the Inactive Noise Control Board was that the staff recommends that the council consider holding a broader discussion to review the ordinance and consider alternatives. And I thought, and that would be a fine job for the next council. Okay. I see thumbs up, or nods, or murmurs.
Not murmurs.
Other inactive or suspended committees, Committee on the Environment and Safe Roadways Committee, I thought maybe the Safe Roadways Committee, like the Inactive Noise Control Board, could be something that would require a little bit further work and looked at by the next council. And I thought this council had pretty much said that we were, we were happy with not continuing the Committee on the Environment, that we had the task force, and that there will be next steps that the next council will take in dealing with Sustainability Coordinator and whatever the environmental things are. And that's not something that this council is going to, is going to put a lot of effort into.
Right. And I would say that I would let both of these go, because I, what I see on the horizon is the outcome of the Task Force on Environmental Action. And I know that there's a big interest in pedestrian and bicycle safety. And I might have done more with that in the last six months, except that, you know, we got all the other things going on, and I'm, I'm moving on. But I know that people that are coming on to the council are going to be interested in that, and that, and I think that they should get a fresh slate to create that. So I would let them both go. But I don't think that we're going to see, you know, there's not going to be any action on the environment or on safe roadways, but I think that that's, that's something to hand off to them. It's a first project. Here you go. Have at it.
You wanted it, take it.
I could just add that there is a committee at the county level, actually Urban Mac is the chairman of that, that might, that a new committee that would be formed that deals with pedestrians, bicycling, and the related stuff could correlate and sort of tie itself to that Montgomery County Committee, or parallel it in some way. So I think dropping both of them would be all right.
I sense that there's thumbs up for dropping those from the code and dealing with future issues in an appropriate way. Okay? Council appointment of chairpersons or approval of chairpersons? My note to myself on this one was, don't go there.
Correct. I would agree with that.
I would disagree. I think that there is some value to the council appointing the chairperson when they appoint the committee. I mean, we set up the structure, we set up the co-chairs. I think, without being specific, there are, there are some instances where the selection of co-chair or chair has not been advantageous to productivity of the committee. And I think that there are situations where the personality who was the chair of the committee has caused an implosion of the committee.
That's true.
And that we haven't, we haven't had a recoverable mechanism to deal with that. And so instead, we've lost, first, what happens is we lose good volunteers, and then we lose quality output from the committee, and then we lose the committee. And for, you know, political and personal and other reasons, we don't immediately, you know, recreate it with another name or anything. We just sort of let it cool off for a while. So I don't know if, you know, there, there should be some way, when we talk about committees, to, I can say this, because I'm leaving. So I can say whatever I want.
Could you name names, please?
No, I will not name names, but that's just, that's what's happened. And it's happened in more than one occasion, and it's happened over a number of years. And I think that we should acknowledge it. And there are committees, and I think we should take responsibility for it. So, you know, one way is to appoint the chairperson, the other is to approve the chairperson, another might be to say, we're going to change chairpeople every year. Then, you know, so you got to, like, so you get somebody, you got to sit them out for a year, and they can't be the chair again until you've rotated to everybody else in the committee. I don't know. But we have lost more than one committee that had been providing good, good product to the city because of an issue with the chair. And I, we could fix that.
Councilmember Simmons.
I think you have done an excellent job of defining the problem. I think this is the wrong solution. I think as the council takes, exerts more control and direction to the committees, we will be able to identify where we have problems and take action to do it. And I think it's the council's responsibility to take that action, not on the front end by appointing and selecting and controlling the committees on who they, who they want to be their leader, but on results that we get out of the committees and whether or not we're obtaining the results that we asked for. And if not, then we need to reconstitute the committee.
Other comments? Councilmember Schultz.
Well, if that case could be solved by the idea of having the committee itself nominate a chairman that the council would, would then accept and appoint for a year, rather than us sort of arbitrarily picking somebody out of the flock.
Well, I'd have them apply to be chair.
Councilmember.
Somebody would apply, you know, the council would apply to be chair. I mean, the committee.
Councilmember Robinson.
I, I think that part of the guidance to the committee can be help in leadership, but also, but I don't think that we should appoint a, a chair. And the help can be along with what Councilmember Schultz just described. Look at the reason for it being, and then set some timelines. This is a tough one, because I've, I've seen people hang on too long, or people cause a ruckus at the beginning. There's a certain energy inside the committee where the people in the committee have better understanding than we do about what, what's going on, what the dynamics are. And we want to have it open so that a succession can take place where, where appropriate. I'm just, I'm kind of struggling here with it, but, but I'm still not comfortable with us appointing, just having a blanket rule saying we're going to appoint the, the chair up front. I'm not comfortable with that.
Let me just say that I said in the beginning I didn't want to go there. If I was going to go anywhere into it, probably as, as much as I'd be comfortable going into it, would be along the lines of Councilmember Schultz's suggestion, that the committee comes up with their chair, and we kind of have a, some kind of formal approval action. And so that if we have a difficulty with something like that, we, it wouldn't even get to that, it would go back to the committee and say, try again. But that's, that's as far as I'd get into it.
Are you suggesting that would be a public process, where we talk about individuals?
No. No.
What are we going to do, in the closet?
There'll be a certain amount of communication with this.
Yeah. Councilmember Wright.
We, we have the authority to remove a committee member, correct? I would be, the approach I would take is basically to make it clear upfront that we think the most successful functioning committees have good, effective chairpeople. So people should keep that in mind as they select their committee members. And that, it should be known that we will remove a committee member if a committee's not, I mean, a committee chair, if the committee chair is not functioning, or we'll ask them to come up with a new committee chair. But I think that, I totally agree with Colleen about the frustration we've had with us, limited number of committees, but there's actually been a lot where it works quite well, right? So we shouldn't forget that. I think that from a batting average perspective, it's closer to like 75 to 80 percent successful, and maybe 20 to 25 percent, you know, not so successful with the occasional, like, real.
Oh, but when they fail, they fail big.
Yeah. Flame out. Lame out. But when they succeed really well because people feel empowered and they've chosen their leader, like in Tazde or the way the Recreation Committee's been functioning, or I even think in the Task Force on Environment, that it works out okay and quite well. And if we give them clear direction, we won't have situations like happened with the Public Safety Committee where basically a set of people took over the committee because they had a single issue that the council actually didn't want a focus on.
And that, and that we made clear when people were appointed that we didn't want them doing that, and they did it anyway.
I told you. I told you so.
Well, you were right.
Thank you.
But Josh will take credit.
I think that was my idea.
That's on camera, right? Good, okay.
Am I missing something or do Councilmembers Clay and Schultz still have comments?
I was, I was gonna say that it might be worthwhile to approve the short-term Task Force members, so we made sure that we got, you know, our good six months out of them, but I don't feel really strongly about that. I do feel like a term limit, though, for chairs might help. Because I think it's good to get a new chair in. It doesn't have to be a year, it could be two years, but a couple of years. I think it's time to pass the baton around. I guess that's healthy for the group.
Could we have term limit with an override by the council? Because that way, occasionally, I think there's situations where you actually would want someone to, they don't, we don't need a fresh person, we would want them to, to serve. But it's sort of the default that people move on.
Well, sure.
So, is there--
Well, I keep, my point of reference is the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, which I served, I'm not sure there was 20 or 30--
You served admirably, but that's a bad example to draw conclusions from.
I'm sorry.
I say you served admirably, but it's a, it's a bad example to draw conclusions from.
You served 20 or 30 years. It seemed like 20 or 30 years in the go over the course of just a few or something.
How'd you let that happen to that committee?
It was all my fault, actually.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. That's on camera.
The idea of having, helping, in some manner or another, the committee to have a, have a chairperson that revolves periodically, whether it's annually or every two years, I think is a way of building leadership in the community and keeping the committees fresh so that if people are a little frustrated with the current chair, they might say, "Well, I'm not gonna quit because I know there's gonna be some change." And not, and then, and I think that would create more stability on a committee and keep people hanging in there and continuing to attend. I don't want us to make this into a constitutional amendment, but I just think that some kind of a role where the, for the council in this process would, would be helpful in building leadership and creating some periodic turnover so that you don't get one person kind of dominating the committee to its oblivion.
Maybe I can ask the city clerk at this point if there are anyone, any committees that you see any difficulty in if we kind of put into the code or the statutes or wherever it would go that the council prefers maximum two years for a chair?
I was just thinking about this. Many of the committees have-- An administrative regulation that sets out their bylaws. And there, and oftentimes it does say that, some of them do say that there will be, a chair can only serve for one year or two years. I think--
But do they all have those bylaws?
No, they don't.
So, maybe we could say that in the absence of, of this being addressed in their bylaws, that there's a maximum of two years for a chair?
Yeah. We could find a way to incorporate that in the, in the code or by resolution. We'd think of something, some way to formalize that.
Okay. Is that something that would address the concern? Does the council feel that that will take care of it? The only one I'm not hearing murmurs from is Councilmember Siemens. Yes?
I'm happy.
You're happy? Okay, so we all like that solution. The only other thing that I had a note on was what to do with McNAC, Montgomery College Neighborhood Advisory Committee. And we don't really have, they, they, there hasn't been much going on for some time.
No.
They haven't met recently.
And even when they did, we didn't get minutes or anything. It was just, my sense was it was kind of--
Well, it was very active during, when the college was coming back with their plan and they did have minutes.
Right.
I'm pretty sure.
Right.
I would think that this should go in the category of the Safe Roadways and even though it's not as broad and the envir--
The envir--
For the next council to sort of say, and let, you know, Seth will have a good sense because he will have door knocked and talked to people, get a sense of like whether it's the commit, the community kind of wants it to continue. You do have to have some vehicle by which the, the city and the community engage with the college. It's sort of episodic is the issue, right? Because it--
Right.
There's just an element of, you don't get the urgency unless there's an issue on the table. So, but I would defer it to the--
But, and you, I thought, what I heard you saying was you were putting some other ones into the deferred category that I thought we had agreed that they were gonna sunset.
Oh, I thought--
The deferred were the Noise Control Board and if we're adding McNAC to that category, but I didn't think we had other deferred ones.
Oh, I thought you had said defer the Safe Roadways Committee.
Well, I did that, I said that, but then every, it sounded to me like everybody was saying, "No, let's sunset."
I don't want to go backwards on that.
I wrote down, I mean, in my notes say that both the Committee on the Environment, Safe Roadways Committee would be looked at by the next council.
And my impression was that we would eliminate them and take those issues up.
Right, that's--
And the next council will take the issues up as opposed to it.
That's what I heard.
See, I heard the same thing, Jesse heard one.
Yeah, I think something completely different.
Well, that happens.
Happy the area.
So, let's make sure we've got closure on, on these either sunset or carryover. And I'll, I'll try this again and see if that gets us there if we need to discuss a little bit more. That the McNAC and the Noise Control Board carry over for discussion by the next council and that the Safe Roadways and the Committee on the Environment sunset.
The truth of the matter is, the Committee on the Environment and the Safe Roadways Committee are both in the code. So the next council--
Would have to make that change.
Would have to take that action.
Okay.
So, it's, it's gonna be there anyway.
Okay, okay. But the recommendation of this council is that they be sunset.
Yeah.
With the caveat that the issues are gonna come up and it may need to be done in a different way.
Wow.
Yes?
We.
Okay. And I'll continue from "we." We are adjourned.